We'll get started by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll take attendance. And I need a motion regarding the minutes of May 13th, 2025.
I move to approve the minutes of the May 13th, 2025 meeting.
Support? A motion to support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Before I read the introduction here, I'd just like to let everyone know that item four, which is 4840 Y Oak Road, is postponed and will not be heard tonight. So if you're here for that, we're not going to be taking that up. So, welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for June the 10th. As a brief introduction, the zoning board of appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees for the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the zoning board of appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the zoning board of appeals is subject to circuit court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium, address your comments to the board, and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments by the neighborhood association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but those comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please combine comments to the specific request before the board. For a request to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this helps provide a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. Thank you. And we'll now call the first case, which is item 1P 172 Overhill. Is the applicant ready? So if you could state your name and address?
Good evening. I'm Brian Nieper, the architect. Address 259 East Frank, Birmingham.
Okay.
So 172 Overhill is a great corner site in Bloomfield Village, much like a lot of the sites in Bloomfield Village, especially closer to Maple Road. It has some unique contextual site issues where all the houses on the south side of Morning View all have a 30-foot front yard setback. We're positioning the house to the front, Morning View, and there's also an issue with the site grading. The grade falls roughly five to six feet to the south, with the highest point being on Morning View. So we're hoping to keep the house closer to Morning View so that we don't have as much grading issues with the house being lower than the actual street. Those are the main issues that we're hearing from you.
Thanks very much. Any questions from the board? So I'll open this to the public for comment.
Hi. Kathy Weisenborn, representing Bloomfield Village Association. Brian was correct that the homes on this particular side of Morning View are all setback at about 30 feet. So positioning the house at that level will give a consistent look across the streetscape all up and down Morning View. This is a lovely home. It meets all of our architectural guidelines, and we are very much in support of this home being built and hope that you will support the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? So I'll close the public hearing. I would think that you don't need to respond to that, so any motion?
With respect to the property located at 172 Overhill Road, I would move to grant the request for the dimensional variance for the new home encroaching up to 10 feet into the required 40-feet front yard setback because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be burdensome because of the change in topography from the front to the back, which makes it better to position the home at this location, and the fact that there are two front yards, which also makes placement difficult, and also the fact that this will have the home setback coincide with the homes on the same side of the street. There is no injustice to the neighbors for the reasons I've stated, and I've already stated the unique circumstances, and this is not self-created. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the new home. All permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support? So I have a motion to support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, the request is granted. Calling the next item, item 2P 1504 Goddard Court.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Sean Gardola of Sean Gardola &amp; Associates of 4248 Donner Court in Royal Oak. I'm here this evening representing my clients, Sonya and Nick Matty, at 5204 Goddard Court, and we are requesting a dimensional variance for a sports court, which also requires permission from the board to encroach into what is technically the front yard setback. We have two things going on on this property. One, as a unique circumstance, there are two front yards here. Their front door and the front of their property faces Goddard Court, very evident in the site planning and even the previous home. And the practical difficulty here, quite frankly, is the site drops over 42 feet from the garage to the rear of the property. So half of this site is heavily wooded, hasn't been touched, and would remain that way. So this is a typical-sized sports court of 30 feet by 60 feet. The retaining walls, in this case, are designed to face inward to the property, so they, in this case, don't require a variance. But that's what I have for you this evening.
Do you have any questions from the board?
That's okay.
Sure.
I'm very familiar with this property, having lived on Susan's Way for decades right around the corner. I remember the old little log cabin, which was there, the historical home and all that.
Yep.
I understand this is a difficult property to develop because the back is basically worthless. There is the steep grade drop, and it's all wooded.
Very dense, yes.
And I read in your materials that you're also planning on putting a pool, and so part of the placement of this is because you want to place a pool in there too.
That's correct.
I'm just concerned with this sports court being so close to Lone Pine. I mean, it will really, really be, I think, out of character. So I'm just kind of telling you my feelings to see if you can convince me otherwise. This just may be a piece of property that, yes, you can have your pool in the backyard, and yes, you can have a nice patio, but maybe you can't have a sports court too. So can you tell me where I'm wrong on that?
So, I don't know if you've been out there, but I'm here every day, and this court is not visible from Lone Pine or any of its neighbors. And in addition to that, of course, we would be having a very dense wall of evergreen, so it's not going to be visible, it's not going to be lit. So the only time you're going to see this is when you're inside the property. In fact, from Goddard Court, you won't even see it because it's down almost eight feet at that point.
Like I said, when I drive by it, okay, where I think you're putting it, I don't see where it's going to be down.
So right now, right now, there's only rough grading, so it actually gets depressed another four feet, that's by the retaining wall, four feet goes in along the side of it, towards the outside of the property, and then the trees are on top of that wall.
Okay, so it's actually going to be down, down, in?
Down in the property, right, by four feet. I'd be surprised if anybody driving by would see anything but evergreen trees.
Okay.
We designed it that way.
That's a good explanation, because it is a kind of a tight property, so I was a little bit concerned with that.
Yeah, and I mean, you can see it from that screen view there. Pushing it down the hill wouldn't even meet any ordinance because the walls would be so high.
Yeah, you can't use any of that back there, you know.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Okay, sorry.
That's fine. That's why we're here, is to get the facts. Any other questions from the board? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? So I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for a motion, or questions, or discussion. I think we can make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion. And I'll start with a permission request first. And in regards to the appeal at 1504 Goddard Court for a sports court, as a accessory structure, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate for the neighborhood and for such a home, as well as the accessory structure should not be objectionable to nearby residents for the screening that is planned for the sports court as well. In reference to the dimensional variance, I also move that that be approved as presented. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict ordinance of the unduly, ordinance of variance would be unduly burdensome because of the uniqueness of the lot, which includes severe topography issues. It also has two frontages, which also makes this very challenging. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because this will be into the property's, down in the property, and it will be well screened. And because of the two frontages, as well as the sloping topography, there are unique circumstances, and because of that, it is not self-created. With that said, if approved, the motion also includes applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the sports court and netting. Additional evergreen plantings will be required, as presented. To screen the sport courts and netting from public view, implanting must meet or exceed the height of the fence at the time of installation for 12 months of the year. The finished side of the fence must face the exterior. There's no illumination permitted on the sports court, I know you know that. And the use of the sports court is limited to daytime hours. Support?
So I have a motion to support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, board members.
Calling the next item, item 3P 510 Wilshire. Yep, good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to see you.
As well. We're here about the variance for our fence.
Jerry and Teresa Lagenas.
Pardon me?
Jerry and Teresa Lagenas, 510 Wilshire. We're here for the variance on our fence. 10-inch difference from the existing fence. Per the last session, it was determined that we bring letters from the adjacent property owners, which we have here, despite no one being here to contest it on the first meeting. These are the letters from those by it that have no objections.
Yeah, so I think the, is there anything else you wanted to say?
No, unless, I don't answer any questions you might.
Yes, I think you've got an existing fence that's wood.
Yep.
The color of this is going to be white.
Correct.
And there's, so there's just kind of a stark contrast between what was there and what will be now in terms of the color. And because the fence is on the property line, there wouldn't be an opportunity to screen it.
They have screening on their side. They have, you know, whatever they have, Rosa Sheran, they have all kinds of plantings on the other side.
Right, so typically, our requirement is the screening would have to be on your property, can't be on the neighbor's property, so the discussion was just because it's replacement of an existing fence, we just wanted to make sure the neighbors were good with the change. It looks like you've done that. And then we didn't know if there was a need to move it in to permit screening. So I think you kind of satisfied that. Does anyone else have any questions?
I think the other question was because of the fence was white, and I think we didn't have any.
Yep, we just didn't want questions, hey, didn't really...
Oh, they're looking forward to it, believe me. They wanted to paint their side white at one time, because it's falling down, the wooden fence.
Outstanding.
It's going to be beautiful.
It's a beautiful fence. So let's open it up to the public for comment. Anyone like to comment on this? So we'll close the public hearing and bring it back in for motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion with regard to the appeal at 510 Wilshire Drive for the dimensional variance required for those rents exceeding 4 feet and以内. I move the variance be approved as requested, and based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the fact that this fence is currently in place and this is a replacement. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors as it is, again, it's a replacement, and the neighbors are in support of it. Unique circumstances with the property are the fact that this is, an existing fence has been there, and they're, again, replacing it. The neighbors' screening is providing enough screening for it, and this is not self-created. So if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to construction. The finished side of the fence must face the exterior, and there is the statement in the motion that additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the fence for public view and meet or exceed the height of the fence at the time of planting for 12 months of the year.
Support? So I have a motion in support. Any discussion? So all I would say is, what are we, so I think because of the location of the fence, screening's not possible?
Screening's not possible, yet the neighbor's screening seems to be sufficient.
Okay. All right, so just wanted that clarification. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
So, why don't we take a roll call, just so we're clear?
I think they got there, right?
Yeah. All right, well then, your request is granted, since you have the necessary four votes. Congratulations, enjoy your fence.
Thank you.
It's been sitting at Lowe's for 10 months.
Okay.
We're looking forward to it.
Well, I'm sure Lowe's will be glad to have the space back.
Yes, indeed. Where are the permits obtained for the building?
Contractor, he wanted to know that. The contractor that's putting it in wanted to know where he got the permits.
Where he can pick the permit up.
Downstairs at the building department.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you again. So calling the next item, item 1783 Hubcross.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Vince Kamaska. I'm the homeowner of 783 Hubcross Road in Bloomfield Village. We are requesting to place a generator and an AC unit on the side of our home. We live on a corner lot, so we will be pushing in from the existing setback requirements. As you can see from the picture, we plan on placing very nice armpit shrubs to block it and shield it from view, so nobody from the front or the sides will be able to see it. I'm here to answer any questions you may have from, about it, but it's, I think, pretty straightforward.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
Did you say this was a replacement, or is this new?
It's actually moving both the units from their current locations to the side.
And it's on the side of your yard instead of the back?
Correct.
Is there a reason?
We are replacing the patio, and right now, the AC unit and the generator are sitting on the current structure that's deteriorating and crumbling beneath our feet as we walk on it, so we need to, we wish to move them to the side of the home like many of the other corner lots in our existing neighborhood have, and we'd like to clear out so we have a lot more space that's usable for the back patio. Other locations, you might see, or you might ask me why we didn't put them in the other ones from a feasibility standpoint of running the gas lines and the existing, or the needed electrical lines. There's no basement in the, one section of my property, or my, my house there, so there wasn't a good way to run those lines internally in the home, and trenching them was a little bit more than, I guess, feasible from what the contractors were saying at that point, so.
Thank you.
That's why we wanted to put it on the side.
That makes sense, thanks very much. And it looks like it's going to be screened, obviously?
Yes, yeah, we'll definitely screen it because I don't want to look at it either, so that's why I'm moving it.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? So we'll open this to the public for comment.
So we did take a look at what the alternative locations would be for this particular thing. The two locations where these are now on the back patio are right in front of windows, and while they do meet the five-foot requirement for the, for the generator, they're right under windows, and it just doesn't make sense in terms of the layout of the patio. And other locations really aren't feasible. They need a small variance. They did commit to fully and completely screen, so we do support this, we approve this proposal, and we do support the variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back for a motion?
I would like to make a motion, Chairman.
Thank you.
In regards to the appeal at 783 Hubcross Road for the four-foot encroachment and the 30-foot secondary front yard setback, I move the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance of strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because he has two front yard setbacks, and where the patio and other windows were would make it not practical for him to put it there. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by the reason of he will have full screening so that they can't see it. The unique circumstances of this property have been demonstrated, given the fact that, again, it has two side yard setbacks, as well as he has a slab, so he is unable to put in other areas of the home, and is not self-created because, again, it has two side yard setbacks. If this motion is approved, applicant for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. Additional evergreen plantings will be required to screen the mechanical units from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the units at the time of planting for 12 months of the year.
Support? Motion to support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So calling the next item.
My name is Kirk Brannick, and I reside at 1672 Hamilton Drive. I'm the owner of 1768 Hamilton, the two lots, along with my wife. Xander Bogarts is going to speak briefly after I do to talk a little bit about the design, but we're requesting dimensional variances because of the practical difficulty of the lot. The lot is very much sloped, drops about 30 feet. I know each site stands on its own merits. The two recent homes that are next to it both received larger variances, not that that matters. That's the home at 1768, and also 1760. But we're actually, or I'm sorry, 1760 and 1750, both those homes. But if you look at the grade, the grade drops significantly, and if you go to the actual home itself, what we're requesting on the side yard, if you go to the site plan, maybe, if you go to this site, that's, that's it, the green one, go to the green one, that's it. On this side, we're really talking a 10-foot setback. The neighbor is 10 feet. However, the home actually steps in. So there's areas where the home is actually 12 feet. You can kind of see where it steps back in up here. Late side setback is actually identical to the home next door. You can't tell from this, but the home next door at 1760 is actually behind the home that we're proposing. And the design of the home that Mr. Bogart's designed, you'll see if you go to the home design, actually, it angles at the shoreline, which is very unique. So what we're trying to do is follow the shoreline, so it'll angle, and therefore, no sightlines are impacted with either of the neighbors. Both neighbors have seen the home design. We have staked out the corners of the home so the neighbors can see the sightline. So the good thing is, both neighbors to the side, also across the street, you've seen as far as your packet, there's numerous letters in there of approval. The association has looked at it, they've signed off on it. We want to make sure that the home meets the character of the neighborhood and fits really well with the lot. We have a vested interest in the street because we live on the street, we have four other residences in the area, we have other property on the street, and so we want to make sure it's the right home. But I'd like to turn it over to Xander Bogart's. He can talk a little bit about the design, about the grade. We have a height variance. It really isn't compared to the other homes. You'll see that it's in alignment with the other homes, but I'd like him to talk. Thanks.
Thanks, Kirk. Xander Bogart's, the architect, 2445 Franklin, Bloomfield Hills. Kirk did a nice job presenting it. The site slopes steeply front to back, so the building height was a concern, and there's the prelim images there, and we are, the site is so steep, we're actually doing two basements. So there is a building section, I don't know if you could scroll forward if we could find it.
It's been sort of still on that one picture.
Yeah, it shows like the grade sloping.
There's quite a dip, and because of that dip, it makes the height sort of higher than what you see from the street.
Correct, and the first floor is actually lower than the street, so we're actually having to divert water around the sides. The site is basically a parallelogram, very tough to design to, so we followed the shoreline like Kirk said. And the lowest basement is in the center of the house, and that is, you can see it there in the lower left corner. We've only dropped that second basement down right in the center, just so we could get a flat area next to the lake so we can play lawn games and so forth. It's a very tough site. Without that lower second basement, the rear yard would become unusable. It's just too steep to terrace or anything, so.
And then the measurement of the lakefront average setback is impacted by the adjacent hole, which is setback significantly, even though this home's in line with everything else, I guess, to the right of it as you look into the back, that.
Correct.
1770 really changed, and all those homes really changed the average.
Exactly, thank you, yeah. The setbacks, like you noted, were 1768. All the homes to the right, we align with that setback. And then, just like you said, the homes to the left, huge setback from the lake, and that skews that average, that calculation in the ordinance. So we're asking for a variance that keeps us in line with the neighbors to the right. If you could go to the floor plan, please? To the architectural floor plans, if we have them?
This is all I got.
Oh, it's all I got? Okay. Anyways, just like Kirk said, so we're asking for six-foot variances on both sides, each side, and that leaves 10 feet, which is the same as the neighbor. Like, also like Kirk said, the second floor steps in, so we're not, we're trying to preserve those sightlines of our neighbors and be good neighbors, and really try to get the homeowners who are here tonight, you know, try and hit that checklist of what they're looking for in their home. So we really push that building down as far as we can. We still need a three-foot height variance. And then with the design, we want to do a modern low prairie style with deep overhangs, and that requires a little bit of side yard variance for architectural projections into the side yard setback. You're allowed two inch per foot. There's a table on the architectural that calls out that dimension. And then similarly, similarly at the front, we projected a little bit, not the footprint itself, but the steps of the porch go into the front setback a little bit. You can see the driveway, where you take that small sidewalk up on the page and then turn left, and there's a very small architectural projection variance we need there as well. We went through, this is the seventh floor plan we went through. We really racked our brains trying to come up with something, and this is, we think this is the best thing for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I just have a couple, actually. Where are you planning on putting the mechanicals? They're not going to go in the side yard setbacks, are they?
We haven't looked at that yet, but we would definitely come back to you if, if we have to put them in the side yard, but we haven't... But we haven't talked about that yet.
So the only reason I bring that up is we're already, if that variance is granted, we're going ten feet. And then we're going to be encroaching more into that side yard setback. We are in a lakefront community, so I understand there's some uniqueness to that. We're just asking for a little bit more. So I would implore you to try to have the mechanicals at the back of the lot and you can screen it there or find it in that tiered area to not try to go more into that side yard setback. That's my request.
He doesn't often use the word implore, so I would pay attention to that.
Anyways, yes, so I'm fine with it. It's not my house. But I'll definitely, we'll work as hard as we can to minimize it.
Any other questions on the board? So I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment? Or, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Karen Shelton, nineteen fifty-eight Clingensmith. As much as I wish the best for them, this is, I've lived on the lake for twenty-five years and never come to one of these meetings. I actually figure it's not my business. But I just, when I got this notification, you know, those houses that he references, every time a new house is built, it's huge. Like, it's just unpleasant to walk around the lake now because the houses are crammed against each other. And the closer the, you know, the bigger they get, you know, the closer, it's just, it's ruining the view for the people on the other side. And like I said, when we walk, several people that are with me are like, what is going on with these houses? This is crazy. So I guess it's more in principle, I'm imploring you in the future to keep that kind of stuff in mind. Like I said, I feel bad if they, you know, and if you go ahead with this, that's fine. But I just, it really is having an effect on the residents around the lake. The bigger, the better. It's like, how big does it have to be? You know, we just, so, that's it. I just wanted to voice my opinion.
Thank you. Is anyone else would like to comment on this item? So I'd close the public hearing. I don't know if you want to respond to the comment, but, I mean, I think you kind of stated why you're building what you're building.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
And granted, I appreciate your comment. I'm the president of the Square Lake Association. And there are some homes next to this home that have five-yard side yard setbacks. And if you count the overhang, then you're at three-foot side yard setbacks. I will tell you, if I would have been here and Xander and the Pradams would have came to me and said that, it wouldn't have happened in our subdivision. This home will add value. I have lived on the lake for fifty years and I really do think this is the right design for the lot. But I appreciate the fact, because as president of the association, believe me, I take a lot of heat when any variance is granted. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'll take it back to the board for a motion.
With respect to the property located at seventeen sixty-eight Hamilton Drive, I would move to approve the dimensional variances, specifically the building height, the encroachment into the average lakefront setback, and the roof hang, or overhang hangs because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. I'm going to kind of lump these things together. Compliance with the ordinance would be difficult and the unique circumstances are the facts that, one, there's a steep drop in topography. There is an angle of the lot as it runs along the water. The shape of the lot is unique and it's in line with the homes that are adjacent to it on the smaller lots. And I think all those things are unique. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of this and it's not self-created. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the proposed accessory structures and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. So calling the next item, item three, three oh six three Franklin Road.
Good evening, Zach Hannah, RZ Engineering. And we have also my clients Omar and Rolla, the owners of the property.
Okay, so couldn't you share with us the need for the variance?
Yeah, this is a nice sized lot. It's about one point six acres and we built it three, four years ago. And now their kids, they want to enjoy having a pool at the back. And we got the pool permit already approved by the township. And that's why we want to add the spa, I guess, and the fireball just to add some feature, nice architectural features there. Also the cabana, I think the other item is the cabana that will be, will provide some shaded area in the summertime at the back.
Is it possible to just simply bring those down to ground level? Why does everything have to be elevated on the retaining walls?
Yeah, this lot is very, has very difficult topo and it's steep going towards the end. And that's why this area need to be close to the basements with the basement level, actually. It's not like too high with the house. It's just at the basement level. But the top of the lot, it's very steep and going, when you go up to the rear side of the property.
How much does it drop from the back of the house to the back of your retaining wall? How much of a slope drop is there?
It's about twenty-five feet.
It drops that far?
Yeah, yeah.
And it continues in a slope like this? It's not just lower?
No, it's up and down in areas. And that's why we tried to bring it close to the house so it's not going to be too much deep retaining wall.
Any other questions from the board? Open this to the public for comment. Close public hearing, bring it back to the board. So I have a significant grade change.
The only question I have is, is there going to be addition? Do you have an evergreen screening around the entire property?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to put some evergreen screening all around.
All around the retaining wall? I see that you have it in your, on top of the retaining wall as well as around the cabana. Are you planning on having some in front of the retaining wall as well?
We can, we can put some, yeah. If that's required, yeah, we'll do that.
Make the motion.
I feel like that's my cue.
That's your motion.
Mr. Chairman, with that.
Kiff's last has the motion.
Yeah, that's it. So.
Except for me.
For the motion to approve, I'm going to go with the permission request first. In regards to the appeal at thirty sixty-three Franklin Road, for the accessory structure, I move to approve as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section forty-two dash seven-six standards because size of the accessory structure is compliant with the adjoining properties based on the setbacks that we have. So if you have to go into any of those, uses the accessory structure is appropriate for the neighborhood, trying to utilize more of that back area as well as the pool. And the location of the accessory structure does not hinder or discourage adjacent property. Again, it's going to be completely screened. So that's the first one, dimensional variance. Want to do them in one and then get approved? Or would you like to do both of them?
Together.
Together?
Do them together.
All right. And then for the dimensional variance, in regards to the appeal at thirty sixty-three Franklin Road, for the dimensional variance in regards to retaining wall exceeding four feet in height, I move the variance to be approved based on, as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because the compliance of strict letter of the law of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because the significant topographical changes in this lot would make it actually even bigger of a retaining wall if we pushed it further down. As well as, there's no injustice to the adjacent neighbors by reason of it's going to be completely screened. They're not going to see it for the privacy reasons. The unique circumstances of this property has been demonstrated based on, again, the topography of this lot. It is not self-created because of the topography of the lot. If this motion is approved, the applicant, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the proposed accessory structure and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreens plantings will be required to screen the cabana from public view and the plantings must meet or exceed the height of the accessory structure at time of installation for twelve months of the year, which you said in your, which you showed in your plan.
Support.
Just a comment. Were you going to add to the additional screening on the outside of the retaining wall?
Yeah, I was going to ask that.
I wanted to see what the board thought of that because that was one of my, it's a big retaining wall and some of these people already have that. I want to see what you guys' thoughts were on it.
I think that's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea, too. So I would have said motion and support, discussion, but you jumped the button. But that's okay. So now we're discussing. I think that's good.
Okay, so I'd like to amend the end of my.
Well, that's, yeah, yeah. Put that in your motion.
And as well as, you will have to do additional everscreening around the retaining wall.
The retaining walls, which you agreed to.
Sure. And we can put it on the property line just to prevent the neighbors from seeing the, is that what you, what you mean?
No, it's the front of the wall.
You can put it wherever you would like so that the neighbors can't see it. So that's up to you. As long as they can't see it. It's up to you.
Sure.
It's your property.
And in my motion, it is anywhere on the property in which it will screen the retaining wall from being viewed by anybody, the neighbors. So we're on the same page. Thank you so much.
All right, so I have motion, support, as a sort of clarified and modified. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. So item four was postponed, so we'll go to item five, four five eight eight Kiff's Gate Bend.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Gary Eubanks. Bloomfield Land and Plants is the name of my company. I've been in business for thirty years. My residence is six eight oh six Lee Crest Drive in West Bloomfield. So what we're applying for here is a restoration project. If you can see on the backside of that picture, at some point in time, there was landscaping there and it was torn out. And right now, it's just bare ground. So the homeowner asked me to come in and see what we could do. And the first thing I noticed is it's in the wetlands. So that's why we're applying for the variance. So we can do the landscaping to help preserve and protect the wetlands and also make it aesthetically pleasing.
Any questions from the board? Self-explanatory. Open this to the public for comment. Close public hearing, bring it back.
With respect to property located at four five eight eight Kiff's Gate, is that how you said it?
Kiff's Gate Bend.
Yeah. I would move to grant the request for the dimensional variance. Basically what this is, is really a request to restore the natural features area, which is just a positive. So in a lot of ways, it's kind of a reverse variance in my mind. So I, you know, I think the practical difficulty was established by virtue of the fact that this was removed in the first place and it shouldn't have been and it's not self-created. So if approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the work done in the natural feature setback and native plantings and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
So I have motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
When can I pick up the permit? Tomorrow? So very anxious to get started.
We don't speak for the building department, but I think you can go down there tomorrow and.
I'll do the records before I go home.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So calling the next item, item six, four nine six two Whispering Pine.
Hello, board. Thank you for meeting with us this afternoon. I'm Brian Forster, this is my fiancee Carly. We moved into four nine six two Whispering Pine last August and it's been an absolute pleasure so far. We're loving the neighborhood and the house and really everything the township has to offer. So thank you for having us. We are seeking approval to keep our existing structure, which is a sauna, located as is. Due to practical difficulty, we didn't have much more of an option to put it anywhere other than the corner that it's in. We're at the end of a cul-de-sac, so our backyard is really narrow. Even though we are almost on an acre, it's very narrow, thirty feet is kind of the most width we have. So, and it's also sloped, as you can kind of see in some of these pictures. So we tucked it back in that corner, surrounded it with arborvitus as well as mulch and regrew the grass. The grasses, those pictures were taken a little while ago. The grasses came in really nicely, the trees grabbed great. They're being watered and taken care of, so they're going to grow full and thick and really won't be able to see much through there. So that's why we're seeking approval, to keep the structure as is. It's very structural sound, it's built great. I have some pictures here as well as some signatures from three of my neighbors granting their approval for the building. And just some pictures to kind of better show some angles and kind of how tucked away it really is. So we did also recommend that we would be willing to paint it, stain it, really any color that feels appropriate. It is going to naturally weather to kind of a birch color over the years. It already is starting to do that on the bottom. So that'll move its way up as it kind of gets older. So that's our spiel and I really appreciate you guys and your time.
Were you planning on painting it the green that was below?
Yes, so that was what I submitted. You know, really open to color. As I mentioned, it will weather, but, you know, if it is recommended to paint it more of a nature green, if you will, I'm more than willing to do so.
Do we have any questions from the board? So I'll open this to the public. Anyone that'd like to comment on this item? So you can step to the podium. Give us your name and address.
My name is Margaret Ruff Trefeli. Excuse me. It's hard when you get old. I'm ninety-three. I've been.
Whoa!
Yes.
Congratulations. I don't think I've had someone comment with your wisdom and experience.
Well, I've been there a long time. I'm the oldest person in the neighborhood. And I live right below these people. And I have lived, like I said, we moved in in nineteen sixty-four. And my lot is probably one of the larger lots in the neighborhood. And I've always loved the fact that I could sit on my back patio and it was like I was in my own little world, my own little zoo almost because there's so many animals there. And all of a sudden, one day, I see this, you know, this boxy thing going up and I wondered what was going on. So I went up and I talked to them. And I said, what are you building? And he said, we're building a sauna. And I said, well, I hate to ask this question, but did you ask for a variance on the ordinance? I said, because we're not allowed to put outbuildings up without permission. And he said, no. But I warned him mainly because I was, I hated to see him build something and have to have it torn down or move it or whatever. But he went right ahead with building it anyway and finishing it. And so now, in the winter, when there's no leaves on the trees and all, it used to be that in front of where they're building, their lot starts and where he's got this little sauna, there was woods. And the people that lived in it before them, she kind of didn't like my woods. So one day she went and had somebody come down and cut down everything. I'm thinking, oh, well, it's done now, what can you do, you know? So I don't have the woods there as much anymore. I'm hoping to grow it back and so that it would hide everything on his lot because he's only about five foot from the lot line. That was the other thing. He's so close. So that he put the greenery around that and the greenery is pretty much almost on my lot line. If it's, it may even be over my lot line, I don't know. But it's pretty close. And I'm afraid whenever he sells the house, because the lot, the greenery goes there so close, people would think that their property line is behind those green arborvitus. I, you know, I hate to be the old ogre, but. I, you know, I hate to be the old ogre, but it looks better in the, in the summer, whenever there's more leaves to hide part of it.
So if there was sufficient screen, if it was screened, would you be okay with it?
Yeah, except that there's no room to put on his lot line anymore, greening, green. He put up the arborvitae and then I see one is dead already. They have to be watered, you know, whenever you put them in, you gotta water them right away. And I don't know if they did or didn't maybe, but they, you know, for some reason they're dying. And I see the other two are also getting little brown spots in them. So I'm a little worried about that.
So I think, I think we're clear on your objection, you know, so you don't want to see it and you're kind of worried that it's too close to the lot line. So anything else? Does that summarize it?
Well, I kind of have a problem with the township. And I'm wondering why it doesn't, you know, he's, they're a young couple.
So we're just, we're just talking about the variance though, so I appreciate the feedback on the township.
But I say, what I'm trying to say is, do you give out the variances and all the rules and everything to every new home that's been, you know, comes in? Every new, people that come in, do you give them anything that shows all the rules?
So I appreciate your question. We're here just to talk about the variance. There's a zoning ordinance that allows zoning, where appeals to grant exceptions to the requirement. So that's why we're here. We're here to grant exceptions when reasonable. So that's our main job.
Yeah, I just wish that he had gotten it.
So we do grant exceptions and that's, that's our whole purpose. But we have to balance different things. So I, and I need your, your feedback. I think I've gotten it and I really appreciate you coming here. I just want to make sure that there's nothing new that you want to add to what you already said. Are we good then?
No, the only thing new is please give out the laws to people because young couples don't know, they go in their lot and they think it's mine.
So it's on our website? You can get it on our website?
Well, they have to be told that there is, that those, that are laws and, you know, or.
Okay. Thank you so much for your comments. Appreciate you coming out and sharing your thoughts. Anyone else?
Aye, yeah, Mark Guyer, resident.
What's your address? I'm sorry?
4425 Chisholm Trail.
Okay.
And listening to what she mentioned, I'm actually here tonight because later on, we have that type of situation that we have to talk with you later about.
Yeah, but we're talking about this request right now.
Understand. Same situation. We have some, we have, in her case, let's talk about this case. She have somebody, nothing against him, but again, like she was stating, we have ordinances, people know to look at the ordinance. When you're gonna put up a building, you go and you see what the requirements are and then you see what you can do. And if you can't do it, then you come and you seek an ordinance.
Correct.
A variation.
Thank you. So I just need you to comment on this specific request.
That's what I'm speaking of. So I'm saying, they already put it there, okay? It's already there. It's begging forgiveness. You know, and at some point, as we say, in this township, and we found a lot of things, I've had other discussions, other issues with the township, where things are being done and they're just being done and they're saying, well, it's already done, we're not gonna, we can't do anything about it. And in this case here, I understand what she's saying. So what she's saying is the screening can't end up necessarily even on your property.
You don't need to repeat what she said. If you have anything new to add.
I, I'm supporting her, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
And I'm saying it would be nice if people got the permit before they did something.
That's true.
We understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item?
I just want to say just a couple of things.
Okay, let me just close the public hearing. So do you want to speak before the homeowners respond or do you, do you want to make your comments now?
Well, I just wanted to make it since it would be close to some of the public comments. Because I don't want the perception to believe that if people put up things without getting permission or variances, that we just say, oh, well, it's already there, so therefore we're not gonna look at it. That happens. Even when people are informed, we have people come before the ZBA, the zoning board, who are already know that they're to seek permission or a variance and don't. So it doesn't always eliminate that. But we do take that in consideration and we still, whether it's erected, we've had people dismantle things, we had people remove things, very expensive things. So I don't want the impression to be that if it's already built, people didn't get permission or a variance, that we just say, oh, well, it's already there, there's nothing we can do. And I'm sure if you have been to our meetings, you have seen us deny those types of things and give them like five days to actually remove it. So I just wanted to say that.
All right, so would you like to respond to the comments of your neighbor?
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. I provided a few pictures. That really gives good context of what Marjorie's explaining. The tree cover really is full and I understand it's summer and that's not the case here around in Michigan. I just planted these arborvitae not long ago and they're grabbing and they're gonna grow and they are watered, as I've explained a few times. So they're gonna be healthy throughout the duration of their life. I also talked to Marjorie and offered to plant more trees, whether it be on her property or on mine, kind of where, where that may align. And we did discuss the orientation of those trees before I planted them. I got, you know, permission and kind of talked through what I was gonna do. So it was no surprise to anyone. But I do appreciate it and that's all I got.
How many arborvitae did you plant?
Total 54.
All of this area?
There's 12 right there, but I did along my whole property line as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions from the board?
Yes. Can you tell me why you chose that location on your lot?
I chose that location because we plan to have children soon and I didn't feel it was safe or really pleasant to look at. And anywhere other than kind of tucked away there, there's a lot of foliage, there's a lot of tree cover, the grass grows healthy there, the soil's good. We were able to dig out a flat, you know, porch to build it on, so it's really stable. So that was kind of where I wanted to, you know, made sense to me, away from the driveway, tried not to disturb any other areas and not directly in the middle of my backyard, because it gets, it really tight back there.
Is there any hardship?
In terms of?
Your yard.
Hardship? I'm not sure I understand. Oh, yeah, sure. It slopes probably 15 feet in the middle of it where my septic goes.
So you have a septic tank back there? Anything else?
No, I am.
Any other questions from the board?
I guess I just have one comment. When we talk about screening these kind of structures, we typically want the screening to be the height of the structure. And you've got the few arborvitae, they're spaced apart and they're not very tall, so I don't think that meets our requirements. Just saying.
Yeah, we planted them three feet to center anticipating growth width and they will grow at 15 feet tall.
Well, but screening is supposed to screen at the time of planting.
Yeah, so if we grant the variance, it has to be screened from day one.
Okay.
To the height of the structure 12 months out of the year. So you can't count the other trees that might lose their leaves in the winter, you know, she's made that comment. You know, I do think painting it green would be helpful, but the screening requirement really is to the height of the structure, evergreen 12 months out of the year. So I closed the public comment. I appreciate your energy. But the public comment's closed. So, so can you meet that requirement?
Yes, I can plant taller trees.
So, so it's gotta be taller trees that obscure her view. So if she comes back and she's got a lot of energy, so she may come back.
I know.
Yeah, so these are, this is a 14-foot-high sauna, so this will be 14-foot-high arborvitae.
Yes, I can plant 15-foot tall arborvitae.
Evergreens, whatever, whatever deciduous material you prefer is.
That you can fit.
So I, I can't let you, I'm sorry, it's just the rule. No, no, no.
I'm struggling with the hardship of having to have it in that location. I'm not quite sure. I mean, I just.
So my property's slanted, the back of that property line's slanted and as the house sticks out, it really chokes out the back of my yard. Where it says 53.31 is where it drops down, probably 15, 20 feet in slope. My driveway's to the right of that, so there's not much better of a place for it to go.
But you could shift it over the 11 feet. Isn't it physically possible?
It would be quite a lot of work.
Well, because you built it.
Because it's built, but.
So Mr. Forrester, you mind if I comment, chairman?
Absolutely.
Perfect, since we're having a discussion. So I both can appreciate the fact you don't want this in the middle of your lot, especially with your backyard where it is. I can understand that. I did visit your site today.
Awesome.
So I did get a chance to look at it and understand some of the difficulties. Some of the difficulties also are that you are, your property line along, I guess we'll call it the southeastern border, does have power lines. So planting taller trees will eventually get into the power lines, which will then need to be cut by the power lines and eventually kill them, like over and over again, right? So that's one issue based on the structure where it is currently. And what, no matter what happens today, it will need to be completely covered and screened, both from your driveway as well as the side and back.
Okay.
So, which currently you did not have anything planted in front of the driveway side. Obviously, it's a very nice one. It looks very nice.
Thank you.
As well as you do have 11 more feet if you wanted to. It was just trying to not put it in the middle of your backyard, obviously, for recreation, those things. That's kind of your hardship. That being said, your neighbors are saying they don't like that. So that's kind of the hard thing that you're working with right now. And I think that's what the board's trying to say is your hardship is somewhat self-created in this point because you already built it. I understand why, it's, it's just hard. Does that make some sense, Mr. Forrester?
Sure.
I'd just like to clarify, when I asked you earlier about your hardship, is, I mean, you do have a septic tank, you have a septic field there somewhere.
I do.
So I was hoping that would be somewhere where you would be in the middle of your field or where you could build. But it does appear that there could be space to shift.
Unless, where's your field? Do you know where your field is, Mr. Forrester?
It's really where that 53.31 is.
So it doesn't go more to the southeast? It goes straight back?
Yeah, correct.
So by moving.
But I don't, I don't know the exact dimensions of the field.
So my colleague here is trying to see is if you put that structure, would that be going over your field, which would be your hardship? Or if it's not going over your field, now it's a self-created hardship versus a hardship that you did not create? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand.
Would we be able to table it?
For what?
So he could figure out where his septic field is?
I know.
Work with the neighbor?
I'm more than willing to work with my neighbors.
Where's his septic field or?
Yeah.
I do have something to add. So appreciate Margie for coming. We did take the time before building to talk to our neighbors and talk about what we could do to make them all feel comfortable with the sauna. We came to the conclusion that we wanted to plant arborvitae across all of the surrounding of the property to make sure that there's privacy. We also mentioned that we could plant trees on your property to make you feel more comfortable with the look. And the pictures that were shown, I don't know if Brian mentioned, but that actually shows what her view is versus what, it's actually the, the, so I think just like visually. Yes, yes, I mean, that's the view that she's commenting on.
It's hard pressed to see. And I just turned around.
So can we, can we put these up on the?
I think that would be very overhead. Do we have to?
Put it on the overhead.
Oh, they have a fancy one now, right?
That's why we redid the roof. So this is a test for the staff. Can they arborvitae? Ooh, I think you're doing it, ooh.
It was in the past.
Right. Maybe they didn't need the check first instructions.
No, thank you for raising your hand. Thank you.
I agree with you.
Can I ask another question?
That's it?
Can I ask him another question? Mr. Forrester? When you built your structure, is it stick-built or is it on like, can it be moved?
It, it, it's very heavy.
But there's no foundation, right? You, you built a.
I built, I built the slab and then.
And then built on top of it, right? So it has actually no anchors associated with it?
It's not real in, no.
I, I saw, you built it very nice, by the way.
I appreciate that.
So I noticed the.
I've owned my lawn for you, too. I hope you noticed that.
I did notice it, because you had your stuff out, so I was there. But I understand there is no foundation associated with it. That would make it easier to move if your septic field wasn't there.
Yes.
So all right, we'll, I will retract the request to put it up on the. In the interest of time.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay, what is your, what is your motion?
I move that we table this. And.
So wait a minute. So I have a vote. Discussion of the motion to table.
Well, can we add to?
I think it's kind of difficult to know where your septic field is unless you have county health department records on it.
Congratulations on the picture.
That is the back area that is Marjorie's property, but that is looking, me looking at that. The sauna is behind that tree coverage.
So this is you looking from her property?
That is correct.
Halfway, so like not.
There's a hill behind me that goes straight down.
Like we're not in her property, we're like looking at.
There's a hill that goes right behind. And then there's, you know, that area. We've talked about, you know, I'm cleaning that up for her, I'm gonna weed whip it, keep the leaves out and whatnot. That was the wooded area she was referring to.
So when you went to the property, was it, was it adequately, couldn't see from the road?
I, his truck happened, the cars happened to be there, so I could not see it from the road, but there was no arborvitae from the driveway side, which we were gonna address no matter what.
Absolutely.
And then there is a hill where he is perched up versus his neighbors, both, I guess to the southwest, southeast.
That's me turning around, just for kind of context here. That's the hill I'm referring to. I am using the picture I just showed you. That's the home that, you know, kind of started this. It is, I mean, it's pretty wooded.
Yeah, but it looks like a number of those trees are not evergreen. That's, that's the, that's the other issue. In terms of the screening. So, all right, so we still have a motion to adjourn and we're discussing it. So any other feeling on the? Cause I, I kind of agree with Carol, finding the septic field isn't. Yeah, I don't know, they're gonna, you're gonna get a.
I, I don't know if you have, Scott, in your time as in construction, you can get somebody to come.
You should be able to find out pretty close where it's at.
Yeah, pretty close where it's at. You can find where the drain field is, you can see if the drain field's actually working properly. There are contractors that do that type of work. I'm not recommending any, by the way.
Well, that's what I mean. He can't go out and locate it himself.
He's gonna have to do his homework.
Unless the county has it on file. Sometimes the county will have it on file based on the year it was done, but again, I can't give recommendations.
Right.
And so that would help sort of potentially justify.
That would show a hardship to me because then.
That would justify the current location as opposed to asking him to move it.
Correct.
Okay, which I'm sure he would prefer.
That's why I thought table might be helpful. You know, Scott supported it.
I supported it.
All right, so we're still discussing it, so any other discussion on that? So all those in favor of the motion to table until the applicant can locate the septic field? Right, is that the, am I sort of?
Does the motion also include speaking to the adjacent neighbor or, or at least trying to?
Motion wasn't just for the septic field. The motion was to not only locate the septic field, but if you can come up with some other solution or some other hardship or work with your neighbor, I think there's information that should be presented that we don't have.
Right, and I think as part of that, I would suggest you, you need to show us a screening plan, right, to kind of address the comment that you, you can't see it from any, from, from, from her view or the road 12 months out of the year.
Okay, so we provided you with the solution.
Copy that.
Okay.
That's the motion.
So all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
So we have one, one opposed. So I think that passes because we have the four votes. So you have enough direction on what? So you have enough direction on what you need to-
Come up with a plan, a better screen and present that to you guys.
Yeah, and, and, and give, give us the location of the septic.
Okay, that sounds good. Is there a date requirement that you guys need this by?
Well, that's kind of the thing is I don't know how-
It's up to you.
The faster the better because you did receive some notices from the township regarding your structure. Obviously, you want to put this to rest. So I'm, that'd be the one I'd say.
Appreciate that, Chris. Thank you.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Okay. So calling the next item. Item seven. 3775 Oak Hills Drive. Good evening. How are you?
My name's Jim Kovach, 3700 Jackson Boulevard, Lake Lake, Michigan. Here on behalf of the homeowners to get a variance for an existing landscape wall. This wall was approved by the board about 2023 in the fall, and I neglected to get the permit in time. And I'm here again to request the variance for the wall and to get the permit. Just an oversight on my part completely. And it's a corner lot, looks across, across these Oakland Hills. Architecturally, it fits the home, and then there are some homes on Oak Hills Drive that have similar types of landscape walls as well. The original meeting was, Matt Moser attended. He's the landscape architect on that project. So I was, at that point, working with him. My understanding of the process wasn't clear, and I didn't realize that after that was, you know, approved, that I needed to get that permit. So I apologize for wasting the board's time on this again, but I'm hoping that I can get it approved again and then follow through with the, with the permit.
Thank you. Any questions to the board? Open this to public for comment. Close public hearing, bring it back.
Ready to make a motion?
Please.
For the motion to approve the dimensional variance in regards to the appeal at 3775 Oak Hills Drive for the dimensional variance for the existing landscape wall in the front yard for three feet, I move the variance to be approved as requested based on information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with strict letter of the law of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because there is a debacary change associated with this home as well as it meets the other type of landscape in this area. There is no injustice to the neighbors because it was actually already approved by this board. We just didn't do it in time. The unique circumstances of the lot haven't demonstrated, this was previously approved. This was applicant error, and this is not self created. This is not self-created due to the fact that people are human. We make mistakes. We're coming here to remedy this mistake. If motion is approved, application for all necessary permits will be made within five business days. So five business days from today, sir. An additional evergreen may be required, but not in this case. You already have some of them. And then if denied, the motion will, that the existing landscape must be removed and the area restored within 30 days of approved. Support?
Motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item eight, 1065 Green Tree.
Good evening. My name is Frank Schollmeisus. My wife's Shelley Sullivan. And we are the new homeowners of 1065 Green Tree. And we're here today to ask for some variances. One for to put an accessory building on the property and also a variance for the size of the accessory building versus the main floor square feet. Correct? So we've brought Eric Green, our designer and architect, with us as well. And we'll let him explain the details here in a minute. Request is because, well, we're in desperate need of storage space in a garage that we can, and put our vehicles in. Because we moved into this house back in November.
No, December.
December of last year. And it's a unique house. If anybody knows, it's a mid-century modern type house. But the garage itself is dated way back. So it's only 18 feet deep. And there's a raised, oh, there you can see the raised steps that were installed. It's, this is all how we, we bought it. So Shelley's Mini Cooper barely fits in there, so, and she changes cars every three years. So we got to do something because I know she's going to get a bigger car. Or maybe. But I can't, I don't have room to park my vehicle in it. We don't have room to put any real garage stuff like normal people have, right?
No lawn and garden equipment.
Yeah, and we have a 10 by 12 self-storage unit now because it won't fit into the house. So that's why we're here. We really need to have this. And we, you know, we, we had Eric design a beautiful structure that fits in the back of the yard. It really is going to be nice, and it's going to mimic the rest of the, the building construction, which I say, which I mentioned is, is very unique with brick and wood siding. And we're going to replace the existing garage door to match the new ones. So, and we've got lots of nice plantings, and it's really like nestled in a very nice area at the back of the driveway. And we were, we, we were very considered of how are we going to design it, place it, so it's not encumbering any, any neighbors. And because we noticed that a lot of houses on Green Tree and in the neighborhood have accessory buildings that, you know, are smaller or larger than this structure here. So that's why we're here today. Eric, do you want to add any details to this?
Just a few words.
Okay, thanks.
Eric Green. 2560 Walcott Street, Ferndale. 48220. So continue what Frank and Shelley was talking about. So the location of their accessory building, the garage, is complying with the ordinance as far as the setbacks, the building heights. And actually, on the back of the house, we moved it farther in, closer to the houses away from the property line. And one of the reasons we did it, obviously for the visibility for the neighbors, but also this area is very wooded, so there was a little area without trees. So we located the garage over there. We have pictures actually of the area, and that was taken, the front, actually, you can see from the front. Another thing you see, part of the hardship is that the house is on a hill. And the garage is going to be farther behind the house. It's farther up on the hill. So it will be no visibility from the street. From the neighbors, you see in the picture on the left, that's a mix of evergreens and also trees that obviously lose their leaves. So the building is going to be screened all year round. Another thing is that there is no really place to attach the new garage to the house due to the topography. And what Frank showed you in the first picture is the steps that's between the existing garage and the, and the finished floor of the first floor. So if the only place we could have put a garage would be to the left of the existing garage. But due to topography, it will be hard to do it. And also with the roof line that will intersect with the existing roof line, it'll create some water management difficulties because there is an entry door to the house just next to that door. So it's very complicated to attach the garage to the house. That's one of the reasons that we have detached garage. That's about most of the items I would like to add. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Any questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions. It appears that it's 119 square feet over the allowed square footage. And there's a covered porch that's in that same size. We'd say it could be used for the covered porch. It's only four feet wide.
The covered porch is just to provide a little bit of entry area for the, for the storage and the office slash fitness room. And it's aesthetics, and also it's also continued the aesthetics of the house. The materials on the house, the materials on the garage, we, we matching them. All the design element, it's very specific to comply with that. You know, the oversized overhangs, et cetera, you know.
So this is- What size of lot do you have?
I'm sorry?
What size is your lot?
It's like 1.38 acres.
Thank you. So it's a, it's a large lot, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions?
So this is just, this is not just a garage. It's also a office. It's going to include office and a, and fitness room? Is that-
That was there just as, you know, it's going to be definitely a fitness room. And I can tell you, it's going to be like a yoga studio for Shelley as well, but-
It's going to look like a three-car garage. It gives us the opportunity to use it as a garage.
Yeah.
And/or put fitness equipment in it if we so choose. We only have a two-bedroom house at this point in time, so it gives us flexibility and/or to store anything else that we're not able to store in our existing space.
Yeah, because the one thing is you, you can't use it to live in it.
Oh, absolutely. There's no water or anything like that in there.
Well, that's where I was thinking.
Right.
Right, absolutely.
It does have no plumbing. It, you know, it will have a-
I'd like to make a motion.
Wait a minute, I have to open it to the public.
Yeah, wait, wait. Is this the same home that had the, the dog?
Yes.
Yes.
That side, you needed to put that on the side because the backyard didn't have enough-
Yes, we didn't have a way to attach the, the garage, the fencing to the entry and exit of the, of the home.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was mentioned in one of the comments we got from the public. It was in the emails, so.
Right.
So I'd like to open this to the public. Anyone like to speak on this item?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Barbara and Roger Tim. We live at 3344 West Chester. West Chester comes into Green Tree at a T. So this is up at the north end of West Chester, if you come at it that way. We've lived in the neighborhood since 1978. Over that time, there's been lots of construction, additions, modifications, whatever, to update homes to contemporary living standards. But in all of those, I can't think of one where the garages face the street. The homeowners association has always required that the garage doors be turned sideways so that they're not facing the street. So that's, that's one concern. Another concern is that this is detached. And the association has always required that there not be accessory structures, that additions be somehow attached to the main home. Maybe they couldn't go straight out from the north end, but they could put a breezeway or something and go out to the north so that this, at least from what I understand, is about the size of a four-car garage, wouldn't be facing the street. Another concern is that, it's my understanding that the township has a 35-foot rear lot line setback. And at least the materials that we looked at were only setting this back 16 feet from the, the rear lot line. Something else that I noticed in their architect's letter is that this is a labeled a one-car garage. The previous owners had two SUVs, so I don't, don't quite what happened to the space, but they were able to get them into the garage. Want to add anything?
So we think it should be denied in that-
So we'd like, we, we would like to have the township ordinances complied with as far as setbacks. And we would like to see a design that goes out to the north from the back of the garage as opposed to something that faces the street, which is right up at the, the proposed location is right up at the top of the driveway. So as you drive by, you're going to see all these garage doors. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much. I haven't closed the public hearing yet, so, so thank you very much. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak, speak on this item? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing and have a response from the homeowner, the homeowners architect.
A quick response first of all for the visibility. Like I mentioned before, the garage is at the back of the yard. It's a deep yard and a topography. You won't be able to see it from the street. You can see the picture of the house, so that's going to be to the left of the house and farther back. So you won't be able to see it. This picture is taken basically when you're standing on the street. You see how much higher the house is, and the garage is even farther behind. So that is for the visibility. That's what I want to mention. And the second thing that was stated that we're not complying with the setbacks, we are complying with the setbacks. We have 16 feet in the, on the side, and we actually providing 34. At the back, that's required only 16. So we are more than what's required.
Yeah, your, your dimensional variance is just because of the size of the garage. So there is, in the notes here, it just mentions a permission request, but this is both a dimensional and a permission request.
But they are doing it 16 feet from the setbacks, which is, which is the minimum requirement. So they're not asking for a setback.
Not a setback, no.
Which is what one of the public comments were talking about.
Correct.
So just wanted to address that.
Correct.
So it is a dimensional variance of for the-
Correct, yeah, that, that was missed. If you look in the notes. Correct, so, so we have both a dimensional variance to grant and a permission request.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the size and for permission.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to add that we do not have homeowners association. Okay, just, they disbanded that 20-some years ago. And there's many houses on Green Tree that have forward-facing garages.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, so I'll bring it back to the board.
I'd like to make a motion.
That would be great.
I'll do the permissional variant first. In regards to the appeal at 1065 Green Tree Road for accessory structure, I move the request be approved and submitted based on information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with section 42-7.6 standards because the, the accessory structure will, will fit within the site. It meets the setbacks. It meets the height requirements. I think that the porch is, is an open-air architectural element. So really, this is very close, in my opinion, to complying with the, with half the square footage of the home requirement. If approved, the motion must include application for all billing, billing permits must be made within one year. And all permits must be obtained prior to commencing installation. A single-family affidavit probably shouldn't be required because there's no bathroom. I don't think it's necessary to have that.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, if they add it later, it's better to have it.
So a single-family affidavit is required to be submitted to the township at that, at that time. And as far as the dimensional variance in regards to the appeal at the same address, compliance with a strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because it does meet all the requirements, in my opinion, and the height, the setbacks, and very nominal size difference. The house does have a small garage, and this will help with storage in the garage as well. There is no injustice to the joint neighbors by reason of the fact that you can't really see it from the street. Unique circumstances with the property is that the garage itself, existing attached to the house, is small. And there's no really great way to attach this garage to the existing home, and this is not self-created. Support?
So I have a motion in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I'm opposed.
We have one opposed?
Still carries.
So again, it carries because you have the necessary four, necessary four votes. So congratulations. Your request is granted. Did you get the opposing vote? Okay. So calling the next item. 6,000 Snowshoe Circle. Item nine.
Yep, number nine. Terry Noson, 32,000 Northwestern, Farmington Hills. Here on behalf-
Here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Hodary, the owners. And similar, but different from the last item. Rather than get into the technical minutia, I thought I would just do this in a broad brush manner, which is, it appears to me that the proposed structure could be deemed by this board to be structurally attached to the main house and not require a variance at all. Because, and it wasn't initially, it was detached, but we took this to the homeowners association and the neighbors. And homeowners association requires in their restrictions, and we took that to heart, an attachment, at least by a breezeway, which we did. And to keep the structure within 25 feet of the main residence, which we did. And I have the homeowners association signed off plans at this point. So one sort of off-ramp for here, because this structure is totally within the building envelope for the house. We could build two stories right out to 16 feet, yeah, we're 30 feet from the side lot line and something like 60 feet from the rear lot line. So that would be one off-ramp if this board chose to interpret it that way. Interestingly, I had one that didn't come to the board back some years ago with George, where we built a garage just like this. And it was attached by a bridge from the existing house. And the discussion we had with George was, what is structurally attached mean? George Kilpatrick I'm referring to, who's still here part-time. And at that time, George said, well, if you'll build the bridge big enough so that there's living space in the bridge, I'll consider it attached and you don't have to go to the ZBA. And that's how, how it transpired, so we never came here, but it's almost the identical situation. So here, the question is whether you, I think you have the authority as a board, wants to look at this and say, it's structurally attached because of the breezeway, which the homeowners association required. And we can dispose of it that way by in essence saying, just go to the building department and get your permit because it's part of the house. If we want to go down the rest of it, I can do that also.
What's that?
So, so, so you want me to continue?
Yeah, go ahead and finish.
You don't want to take that road?
Terry, I just want to say one thing, Terry, okay? We, we are going to defer to our planning department, who says that the variance is required, so go ahead with the rest of your thing.
Okay.
Yeah, that way it is.
So the proposed structure's been designed to...
Although, that was an admirable try.
Well, I don't think it's just a try, I think you have the authority to decide what structurally attached means, and that's the only term of art. But the proposed structure's been designed to complement the existing principal residence in terms of scale and height. And hence, that's the only need for the height variance, because we wanted to make the roofs match in with the existing residence. And one of the exhibits that you have, that one that we sent in late, Corey, with the, I don't know, did I give that to you? Oh.
This is what I got.
Yeah, I, I did it for the homeowners association. You can put it, you can put it on that old machine there. Yeah, she asked for it when we attached it. It's pretty long, but you can put the portion up like it's got it.
Give me two minutes.
No, we tested this out.
Yeah, we're ready to go. Yeah, so while he's doing that, I'll continue though.
Okay.
The roof lower pitched, not ask for that. The area requirements is another issue within, that's noticed on here. But I've take, taken issue with staff on how they calculate the area requirements. So I wanted to walk you through how it was done, and I don't think it's consistent with the ordinance. So the way that this 755-foot overage that's in the notice, and it was actually 1,835, and they corrected it to 755. And that, Corey and I have gone through, and the math is, the house is 4,717 square feet. The existing garage is 1,481 square feet. And then there's a loggia which has covered living space, but it's not counted as living space in the back. The accessory building consists of about 682 of the caretaker apartment and 950 of additional garage. And so that's 1,632. If you just take the house, divide it in half, that's 2358, less 1,632, we're less than half. But according to the staff, that they add back the existing garage as garage square footage, which I see nothing in the ordinance that would permit or require that. And that's why we're, we're over by that calculation. I can walk you through piece by piece, but I, I really think that this...
Well, Terry, you're adding space, and that added space goes into the calculation, and that's what puts you over.
No, no.
That's the way it's always been done.
No, no, they're, they're putting existing garage space, adding that to this space, and that's not what your ordinance says.
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't.
All those, all the existing garages have always been part of the calculation. Additional calculation, not just the, there's the house itself, then the existing garage goes into the accessory stuff. It's always been like that.
Well, it's, but you should have an ordinance that says what you're required to do.
Well, my guess is it does say that.
That would make sense, though, doesn't it?
It does not say that.
Well, it would make sense, I mean, because a garage is accessory structure, and it's, and if you're adding more garage, it's the same kind of accessory structure. So you combine the square footage together, and then you...
The garage that's part of the main house is not an accessory structure.
No, it's not.
But that's what...
It's not under, the township has never included the garage as part of the main structure, ever.
Even if it's attached.
So my suggestion is you stick to the variances, because every time you come in, you argue about whether you should be there, Terry.
We appreciate your feedback.
Because I, I love...
We appreciate your feedback on the, the calculation of the square footage.
Let's move on.
Okay. So the proposed structure does not incorporate any features or serve any functions that could not be included within a principal residence constructed in the same location. The design mirrors the principal residence, that's, if we slide this over. The faint part of it is the, there you go, is the, the breezeway in the middle and the new garage on the right. So, and then, as I said, the homeowners association has reviewed the revised architectural and site plans, and they did require the adding of the breezeway and the 25 feet, and we did that. And they're not, they, they have no issues with screening, although we did provide a landscape plan that we're adding two evergreen trees in the front of the garage to screen it a little more from the street, even though it's a side-entry garage, and it's a little court created by the two garages facing each other. And we also added a few trees in the rear where we saw that there were some potential gaps in the, in the existing vegetation, which if you look at the aerial photos we sent in, are pretty dense. So, the, the other thing that did notice, which I'm curious to hear your position on. They also talk, and I saw it in the previous one too, about that, that the... This has to be quote "screened, screened from adjacent residents with evergreen deciduous material, which will obscure the view 12 months a year, and such vegetation shall be maintained in a healthy condition." Again, there's a misreading of the ordinance here, because it says in the ordinance, that's sub-nine of your accessory structure ordinance, that the accessory structures that are in excess, nine inches above grade, I concede we are, and which are placed, and which are used for other than the housing of motor vehicles or boats, shall be screened from adjacent residents. So therefore, an accessory structure used for the housing of motor vehicles or boats shouldn't have this screening requirement. But we did provide some landscape screening anyway to screen it from the street. Just FYI. So, so really, the, we're, we're building within the existing building envelope. We're about double the setback requirements from each lot line. We have the homeowners association approval, and I don't think we have any persons here who are coming to object. I know the president of the homeowners association wasn't, and they've talked to the neighbors, but can always be surprised. So I would ask that you grant the variances that you, that were noticed and that we move on.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have some questions and maybe clarification.
Sure.
You mentioned about the attachment of the house to the garage. So I've been here a bunch of times, and when, the reason to attach a garage to a house with an overhang or a breezeway is to pick up the same zoning requirements of the house. So if you want to build a accessory structure that's tall, you can go, if you attach to a house, you can go 35 feet, the same height of the house.
Correct.
But unless there's a door going directly from that accessory structure into the house, it's not part of the house. It's still an accessory structure and still needs a permissional variance.
Well, we could accommodate that, please, also.
Just to clarify that.
All right, I have a, I have a question.
Any other questions?
Now, I'm, I'm looking at all the variances that were granted for this property already, and I note that there was never a variance granted for the height of the home. Wait, 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 wait.
There was never.
Wait, wait, for the height of the home. And stop, stop a minute, Terry. What you're saying is you need the height on this garage to match the height of the home. So, so what I'm trying to understand is why this garage, if the house didn't require a variance in height, and it's that height, why is this garage need, require variance?
Because these, because your staff is looking at it under the accessory structure ordinance. And they interpret the 14 feet to be to the ridge, not to the center.
So you can go 30-something to match now, it's an 14.
Okay.
But the house had never, there were no variances for the house itself.
Right, that's what I thought.
It was totally conforming.
That's what confused me, okay.
It's a reason to connect it so you can go to the higher.
All right, okay.
But what, what is the difficulty? I mean, what, what's the, what are we, what's the, what's the...
Well, the difficulty is the owner needs additional storage space, he's a collector. And he wants some additional storage space, and he has a very, very large lot. And he wants to build a tasteful addition to that large lot. And as, and we, it's not practical to go forward and expand the existing garage, or go rearward and expand the existing garage, or add to the front of the garage and make it two cars deep, that doesn't work. So it's not a, a, you know, fair to someone who, you don't have a limit on garage size other than this 50% of the, the house limit, so...
Well, that means there is a limit, so, I mean, there is a limit, that's why you're here, right? Because you're asking for an exception to it. So I was just wanting to understand what the hardship was to add an additional, because you already do have a garage, an existing garage, it's what, 1,481 square feet, I think.
Correct.
I was just wanting to understand what the hardship was.
He's a collector, we have had, he's a collector. So I wanted to ask about the living area, so there's a bedroom, a bath, and a living room. And I think in the application it said that's caregiver's pay, caretaker's pay. So that, is that, that's going to be a paid employee?
Yeah, so with, yes, within the ordinance, you have...
Sure, I'm just asking, it's, it's a paid employee?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Any other questions from the board? And I, your knowledge of the ordinance is, you spend a lot of time on it, I hope your clients appreciate how much time. And I'm looking forward to your paper on some of the flaws. So, all of this to the public, anyone like to comment on this? So you're right, and no one's, close the public hearing, bring it back. And thank you for, I'm, I'm teasing you a little bit, but thank you for your...
I, I understand.
Comprehensive and passionate presentation. So can we vote on this? Do we have other questions? So, yeah?
All right, I'll try one.
Yeah, give it, give it a shot, I think it would be appropriate, Carol, given your...
Given my what? My relationship with Terry?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Carol, I'll take you off the hook, I'll do it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, with regard to the permission request at 6,000 Snowshoe Circle for the detached garage, I move that the permission, the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the size of the accessory structure is compatible with joining properties based on, you know, other things that we, based, based on what was presented. So also, the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of properties due to the fact that it is nicely screened and fit into the lot in an appropriate location. So that's the permission request. With regard to the dimensional variance required for the structure exceeding 14 foot, heat, 14 feet in height and the result in the accessory space exceeding one-half the ground floor area, I move that the appeal or the variance be approved as presented. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance of the letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the fact that, the, the, what are we going to use here? Prevents reasonable use of his property, also there is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors based on the fact that is, it is a good orientation on the lot compared to the home. Unique circumstances with the property are, have been demonstrated because of the existing floor plan, and these are not self-created. So if this motion is approved, let me scroll down here. Application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to commencing installation. A single-family affidavit is required to be submitted to the township.
Support?
I have a motion and support, any discussion?
Yeah, well, I'd like to add a condition, that if Terry ever appears before us again, then he has to stop telling us we don't know what we're doing under our ordinances. Just kidding, but remember that, Terry.
I'll call you in a day.
Come in advance, I'll tell you you're wrong.
You'll accept that though, Terry, because you're reasonable.
I am.
Yeah, okay, so he's accepted that, I think. Okay, any, any other conditions we want to put? All right.
I think she had a question. Oh, no, no, I don't.
You don't have a question?
I answered in my head already.
So, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Terry, it's been a pleasure, thank you. Call... 10, 1970 Shore Hill Drive. Is the applicant ready?
We're Rob and Debbie Whippet at 1970 Shore Hill Drive, and I just want to say first, your work is thankless. And sitting here all evening is, whatever the outcome of this, it's appreciated.
Has it been a little entertaining?
It has been a little entertaining.
We appreciate you thanking us for our thankless work.
Yes, it, it really is amazing, and hard, it's difficult work. So, we built a garden in our backyard during the pandemic. My wife is an amazing gardener, and the fence is too tall. The reason we built it to the height that we did is because we have many deer in our neighborhood, and they would be able to jump... and they would be able to jump a shorter fence, which would, on the one hand, eat the garden, but even worse, potentially trap the deer. And that is not what we were looking to do. We built it up. Never occurred to me, embarrassingly, as a non-practicing attorney, that a variance or permit would be needed.
Well, Terry's a non-practicing attorney that practices law.
He knows the ordinance way better than I do. So, so yeah, we are here seeking a variance for the height of the fence. We've talked to both of our next door neighbors. One of them, as a hero effort, has been sitting here with us this evening, who's our direct next door, closest to the garden. And we hope you'll grant the variance. Happy to answer any questions.
What are you growing?
No.
Fair enough.
So many things. So pea pods, peppers, cucumbers, peonies, squash, herbs, eggplants, hot peppers, apple.
I think it's a great setup that you've got there. I personally try a garden every year and I feed all the animals in the neighborhood with it.
And that's true. They appreciate that too.
Yep, they do appreciate it.
It's very difficult. Yes. Everything. Deer, rabbits, chipmunks.
We have turkeys now coming around.
Right. There are a lot of turkeys.
Do we have any additional non-vegetative questions? From the board? Okay. So open this to the public. Like to speak on this?
Good evening. My name is Jay Dreyfus. I live at 1946 Shore Hill, right next to the Lippits. You can, is that my house in the behind, on the other side of there? On the other way? Anyway. If I'm sitting out on my back deck, I can see their beautiful garden. Doesn't bother, I mean, I love it. I have, I plant raspberries behind my garage. Thankfully, the deer don't like raspberries. My wife just planted a whole bunch of petunias. I always spray everything that I think the deer will eat with the deer repellent. I didn't think they liked petunias and, you know. Couple days later, the petunias were gone. I totally understand why they, they built that. I mean, the deer, we have a lot of deer. The deer are a big problem. And it gives me a smile on my face to see the stuff growing. And it, it really is pretty close to me. I mean, you could certainly twice, oops, excuse me, twice as far with a pitching wedge. But doesn't bother me a bit. I like it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
So hold on. We have, sorry, clear comment?
My name is Rose Fagan. I live 2264 Shore Hill Drive. And I came on behalf of the board for the Shorewood Hills. And we, there's nothing in our deer restrictions that are specifically against this. And it does, as Jay said, it looks, it is aesthetically pleasing and there is a huge deer problem. So there was nothing from the board's position, you know, as it was all basically township. So, okay.
Anyone else would like to speak on this item? And I'll close the public hearing and bring it back. I will say, I don't think we've ever seen anything like this in terms of.
It's really nice.
But it's actually a nice solution because, I mean, I think we're all experiencing. I had, I have a pandemic garden as well, so. Trying to figure out, I'm looking at your.
Me too.
Solution. Is that removal? Can you make them? Are you want to get in the?
Well, it's nice because it's airy too.
Right. Does it have a door? How do you get in there?
It has a door, locked door.
Oh.
It latches, so.
Chairman, I have one comment and I would love to make a motion. But even though the neighbors seem to like the aesthetics of it, per our requirements, it needs to be screened from the neighbors being able to see it. That is the, does everyone on the board agree with that?
Yeah, so I have sort of the same thing. So, so that, but I mean, is this, does this circumstance mirror an exception to that?
The only problem with screening it with the high redums, whatever you require, is that it could affect someone getting, helping it grow.
Well, so this is where we work together to say you have to be screened from the neighbor seeing it. So it doesn't have to be two feet from the fence. It could be five feet from the fence or 20 feet from the fence. But trying to continue with the standards that we have here, that all fences should be screened except for specific exceptions, is this an exception in which we want to say that? I just wanted to hear what the board thought of this.
Well, is this a, this is a kind of a temporary structure. You're not taking this down. You're leaving it up and then planting.
Correct.
So it's, so it will be, so I'm just discussing.
No, no.
So it will be.
I, I don't have a firm yes or no. I just.
No, because I thought the same thing, to be consistent.
It would have to be removed after a three-year period or renewed or, we've done some things with chicken coops and things like that.
The other thing I'd just say, things like a pergola, we don't require to be screened. So is that closer to a pergola?
I mean, it is open.
Yeah.
It's wide open.
Right. You know, it is in the middle of the yard. Because I thought the same thing. I looked at it to be consistent.
I guess when I look at this, I mean, the purpose of it, they do need to have the light.
Correct.
I mean, it's a garden. So, and it is very open and airy. And I agree, it's sort of more like a pergola or one of those open structures that we allow that we don't necessarily screen.
You wouldn't screen it like a dog pen either. It's like if we had a dog pen that was sitting out there, which I have seen people. And we don't necessarily require them to be.
Well, we may be able to screen a chain fence. If it's a chain fence, even though it's airy, you can see through it, visually not obstructing, we have it.
Again, I don't actually have a strong point on this. I'm just kind of seeing. No, but it's a good point.
It's a bigger area. It has a different feel and look and kind of a different purpose too.
True. And we're talking about screening it from public view, not necessarily has to be screened from the adjacent neighbor, but, I mean, which actually kind of.
That's redundant.
I'm thinking out loud, so.
I mean, I guess the other thing is when I look at the location of this property, because there's nothing in the back. There's nothing in the back and there's nothing on the side. The one neighbor that really would see it is not opposed to it.
Right, but if he moves and the next person, but I, to me, it's a close call. And the other thing, the fact that it's a garden that you're looking into as opposed to, you know, something else is that that also makes it different and, you know, sort of mitigates the need for the screening. Because you're seeing the same thing that the screening.
Screening plants.
Yeah, I'd say your screening, you know, the screening would be sort of duplicative of what you're, other than the pergola-like structure. So I'm okay with it. I mean, I came around on it, so. And I'm not as intense a gardener as here, but.
How about in my request, I'll say may be required. And if we get neighbor input in which this neighbor moves and then decides that they don't like that screening, we would then enforce that. Does that sound good for the board? Using the word may versus shall?
Sure.
So it would keep our options open. And then that way you wouldn't have to come back.
Could I say one thing?
Sure.
Just want to bring up some issue that the building department has raised in the past is difficulty with enforcing conditions made by this body. And the vaguer we get, the harder it's going to be for them to accurately and fairly and equally apply your condition. So my preference would be to not do a may.
I don't, I don't know if I can comment.
Sure. We're, everything's falling apart. Go right ahead.
My, my thought as a lawyer is that should our accommodating neighbor move, one, someone else would be buying the home with full view, knowledge and understanding of the structure and what it looks like in advance. And two, should that person, once they move in, have an issue, then we would be able to resolve it at that time by agreeing to screen it or do some other activity because we want to accommodate our neighbors. That's important to us.
So how does everybody feel? Do you want to call Terry? See what he thinks? Terry knows.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Sure.
In regards to the permission request, in regards to the appeal at 1970 Shore Hill Drive for the accessory structure, I move the request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance of Section 42-7.6 standards because the size of the accessory structure is, for the existing fence, is compatible with adjoining properties based on the fact that it needs to be seven feet in order to keep our very, very large deer out of your garden. The use of accessory structure is appropriate for the neighborhood as everybody in the neighborhood has no problem with it, including the association that has nothing of their deer restrictions. Location accessory structure will not hinder or discourage adjacent properties to the fact the neighbors are here saying they're fine with it. So that's the permission request. We're going to go to the dimensional request now. In regards to the appeal at 1970 Shore Hill Drive for the existing fence exceeding four feet in height, I move that variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because the compliance with the letter of the law and the ordinance would unduly burdensome because they would not be able to have a garden based on the type of animals we have in our area. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors based on the fact that they are okay with the way it looks and the screening that we would, may or may not be requiring would prevent them from seeing these beautiful plants. The unique circumstances of the property has been demonstrated given the fact that it is just a garden and this is not self-created. With that, if approved, the application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days. That's it.
Support.
So I have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Request is granted. Thank you.
Enjoy your garden. Yes.
We accept fresh vegetables.
Calling item 11, 1190 Kemper.
Hello, this is, we are Diane and Anthony Russell. We're looking to deal with greenhouse. The variances, because we go over the, what Terry was talking about, the 50% of the ground floor area of the house. We're over by 128 square feet. We have a small house. It's like 1,000 square feet. And we're adding a lot of pad upgrade. We're going to do the arborvitae, the screenage, the property line where the red line is. That's all screened by our backyard neighbor. And all our neighbors approved it. They would love to see it and love to see our stuff. We'd like to do bonsais too and vegetables and, yeah.
What are you growing now?
So that's pretty much it.
So when you say screening, this isn't, you're not putting anything up additionally than what's already there?
Just the greenhouse.
No, but I'm saying you're not screening the greenhouse with anything.
Well, yeah, the floor plan that he had up earlier, that would be the arborvitae trees, nine feet tall, it's a nine-foot greenhouse.
There's one, two, three, five of them.
Five on one side and five on the other.
Right, yeah.
And screen it as best we can.
Any other questions from the board? Open this to the public. Who would like to comment on the greenhouse? Closed public hearing. Bring it back.
With respect to the property located at 1190 Kemper Avenue, I would first recommend granting the permission request for the greenhouse because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. That's based upon the, the accessory structure is compatible with the neighbors and it's appropriate for the neighborhood. And the location is such that it won't discourage the use of adjacent property. I would also move to grant the dimensional variance for the required accessory structure, which results in the space exceeding over one half of the ground floor of the main building because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. And that has been demonstrated by virtue of the fact that compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be burdensome based upon the location of the, let's see this better. Location of the home on the lot and the fact that it is also complying with all ordinance requirements in terms of placement. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors and the neighbors approve of it. And the unique circumstances I've already discussed and it's not self-created. If this is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to commencing construction. I will also add that this approval includes the planting of those arborvitae trees at nine feet tall to screen the greenhouse from public view. And in addition, a single-family affidavit is required to be submitted to the township.
Support.
So I have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Request is granted.
Good job.
So Jocelyn, I'm going to ask you to take this agenda item. I'm going to take a short break and I'll be back.
All right. Well, we have number 12, 3895 Top View Court.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
It's been that long, right?
Yeah, exactly. My name is Sam Kilberg. I just moved to Bloomfield Township in April with my wife, my son and my dog. We live at 3895 Top View Court. I am seeking a fence along the rear or secondary front yard. My yard, as you see, backs up to Adams Road. So I have two front yards. I have my Top View Court and then the secondary front yard is Adams Road. I'm seeking a dog enclosure fence. I have a two-year-old, two-and-a-half-year-old son as well as a lab. So I would like a fence along Adams Road for security, safety reasons mostly for my son and my dog. My neighbor directly to the south of me has a, so the fence that I'm seeking is, if you go back one slide. I'm just seeking a standard six-foot-high privacy wood fence. My plan is to put it in the, there's some dense foliage there. I plan on just, you know, staining it a walnut or a brown, so it kind of blends in. You'll see the, there is an existing six-foot fence on my property. It's one of the first things I noticed. It is in terrible disrepair. It's actually being held up by two-by-fours on one side. So my plan is to tear that down and then extend the fence my entire property line. So my neighbor to the south has a fence along Adams Road, the entire property line, a six-foot-high privacy fence. So my thought would be, my neighbor at 3896, my thought would be, and I've talked to them, they are in full agreement to get the fences as close as we can, maybe even connect them. I've hired Action Fence who did install their fence along Adams Road so that it would just kind of be unison and harmonious going down Adams Road. Same height, same fence, wood fence. Mine will be stained to blend in. You know, this is not self-created because I have two frontages. So I do need a variance to allow it in my front, secondary front yard because dog enclosure fences are only allowed in your side or rear yards. I also need a variance to put it at the property line. That is because my neighbor has an existing fence. If I don't match their fence, then you have different heights, you have different widths in between. So I'd like to just continually extend it. I'm only going as far as there is a guy wire and a tree. As you'll see, I could, I could take it all the way to the corner. I'm trying not to cut down trees or anything. I, we've, I've spoken with Action Fence. We've walked the property. We found a good line where we only have to really cut three feet and take down no trees, just kind of some foliage and, you know, some shrubbery. So that's, that's the goal. There shouldn't need to be any screening. I've included some photos along Adams Road. If you notice, there is dense, dense existing vegetation. You know, this was taken now. I would have to cut down trees and cut down a bunch of shrubs in order to screen it on the other side. So I'd like to just plant it there, paint it brown and have it kind of blend in. And I'm open to any questions you may have.
So is the fence is just in the rear or are you connecting it?
No, I'm, I'm just doing the rear. Yeah, I plan on.
Oh, just the rear?
Yeah, just the rear. I don't want to enclose my property. I've spoken with my neighbors on both sides. They love the idea. I plan on maybe doing a fire pit in one, one back corner and so I don't want to close it off. And my neighbor did a beautiful arborvitae along our neighboring property line. So I just want to do it along the year so it blocks it. I mean, theoretically, if my dog or son wanted to get to Adams Road, they would have to go all the way out to my neighbor's yard run around. I mean, if they wanted to, they can, but I don't plan on enclosing my property, no.
Oh, okay. Because it's a little, because it says enclosure fence, so it's a little.
Yeah, so it just, it just blocks Adams Road.
Correct. Yes. Yeah, I plan on doing arborvitae, shrubbery in the back left corner, kind of blocking it. But I don't need a variance or a fence for that. And I, and I don't want to wall off and kind of create like a compound. I just want to block Adams Road.
Because I thought it was more sort of like a privacy or for sound off Adams Road.
That will, will give me as well, privacy. It will give me sound. It will also give me safety and security with my son and my dog.
Okay. Keep going. Take the whole thing.
Oh, you want me to take the whole thing?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Any questions for the board? Any more discussion? Well, then I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone want to speak to this item? And I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board for any questions or, or motion.
I'll make a motion, please. With regard to the appeal at 3895 Top View Court for the permission request required for the privacy fence, I move that this request be approved as submitted. And based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of this accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as it will be consistent with other homes in the area. Additionally, for the dimensional variance required for the privacy fence exceeding four feet in height located in the north Adams Road frontage and encroaching 16 feet into the required 16-foot southerly side yard setback, I move that the variance is approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the fact that this is a unique lot and that it has two frontages. frontages. Additionally, there's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by a reason that it's consistent with other homes in the area, particularly his neighbor. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated given that it, like I mentioned, it has, you know, multiple frontages and this is not self-created. So if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year. Additional evergreen plantings shall be required to screen the fence from public view and plantings must meet or exceed the height of the fence at the time of installation for 12 months of the year. The finished side of the fence must face the exterior.
Support. Go ahead. It's still you.
Okay, I have a motion and support. All those, um.
Aye.
I'm sorry. My brain froze. I need to snack.
It's a lot harder than it looks, isn't it?
My brain froze because I was thinking about something.
Okay, okay.
So all those are agreed?
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
I have a question. You did read the evergreen screen, so I do have to provide evergreen screening and on the other side along Adams Road. That's, I was reading it when you were listing off the motion.
And it's on the property line.
I would have to go into the road right of way and I would have to cut down a bunch of trees to do that. That was mine.
Well, that was not the intention of that.
Okay.
So let me strike that from my motion, please. Oh.
Is it possible that I could have it facing inward and not screen it?
I said I second that, okay.
Yeah, just the screening was, it was my point.
Yeah, because like a log telegraph and other places like that, we haven't required.
Completely, yep, yeah.
So.
Okay, so that'll be strictly. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, calling the next item, item 13, 5640.
I have a question.
We have a question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This, this garage is attached to the house, so why is it a permission variance? It's attached to the house. So they talk about being over the square footage, but they've added a garage to a house. It's not an accessory structure that's detached. So is that a permission request? I don't think it is.
Do they need a dimensional variance because they're over the square footage?
So they need one for being greater than half the area of the primary structure.
If it's attached?
Yes, attached garages are treated as accessory structure.
Right.
It's the same calculation, right?
But, but by the point is, we need to do a dimensional variance too.
Right. It's just not there.
It's just out of the notes, it's like the other one.
The other one didn't have the dimension.
So it's all variances?
There's two variances.
Well, it's attached, so it's not really a permission, it's a dimensional variance, right?
It's a dimensional.
Okay.
Yes, I think it just got flipped. If you just look at the notes below it.
Yeah, I was looking at, well, that's what we were saying. It just didn't go with the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so are we good now? I want, we're, the variance, it's a dimensional variance.
Oh, now I don't know what to plead my case. Just kidding. Martina Wells, I'm the homeowner, 5640 Woodland Pass, asking permission to build an attached garage. It's in Foxcroft subdivision, so we made sure to follow all the requirements as far as the setbacks. We have quite, I mean, kind of a big lot for the subdivision. So we have all the setbacks, we're going to have it the same color as the house. Part of where we are, the garage cannot face the street, so we were having it on the backside so it would be facing the side of the house. And just asking for permission for that variance of the 50%. The garage we have right now is, I think, 2021, 20 by 21, so smaller, hard to fit Silverado in there with another car right there. And so my mom recently moved in with us. She has some medical issues, so all her doctors are down at Beaumont, so we're needing the extra space for storage, not only for her stuff, but our stuff. Our four-year-old son has needs and wants for his bikes and all those things, so we're, the existing garage will be storage and then hoping to just park our cars in the new attached garage. And excited about the requirement to plant trees. Love to plant trees. So, yes, I appreciate what you guys do. Don't want to sound like a broken record, but it's beautiful here and you guys helped to keep it that way, so. Also, all of our neighbors are excited. That street, all the houses have been, you know, renovated, things like that, so we're just, we're keeping up with everybody else, so. Any questions?
Yeah, my wife grew up at, on Wing Lake Road, 6116, so I'm very, that's a great area.
Oh, we love it, it's so nice.
And you got the approval of the.
Oh, yes, I forgot to mention that, yes.
Any other questions from, anyone open this to the public for comment? Anyone like to comment on this item?
Stretching the legs, I'm sorry.
What's that?
I'm just stretching the legs, I'm not commenting.
Okay, well, thanks for that comment. So I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I'm going to make a dimensional variance.
Yep.
Question, in regards to the appeal at 5640 Woodland Pass for the variance associated with the total accessory structure exceeding the limit by 110 square feet, I move to approve the, I move the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the law with the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because their garage doesn't have enough space for modern vehicles and all they're trying to do is provide that garage space or accessory structure so that they can actually have their cars out of the driveway, making it nicer for their neighbors. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors based on the fact they already got HOA approval and have met all the requirements for the deed restrictions in their neighborhood. Unique circumstances of this lot have been demonstrated for the fact that it's only a 20 by 21 garage, our bigger vehicles will not fit in there. This is not self-created because they didn't build the garage. So with that, if approved, the applicant for all, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be, must be obtained prior to commencing of the installation of the garage. A single-family affidavit is required to be submitted to the township. And because it's not a detached structure, there isn't how screening required.
Oh, bummer.
Well, you could, you could put it in anyway. We encourage people planning.
No, I think I might use that. I'll say the township wants us to plant some trees.
Oh, okay, so you have to go back for the budget director to get that.
Yeah, yeah, yep, that will work.
All right, so I had a motion, was there support?
Support.
Okay, so any discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling item 14, 7080 Holiday Drive.
Yes, hi, I'm Eric Mogoyom, my wife Anna Rico. I'm an engineer, I work for Ford. I develop police vehicles, the ones that they use in our streets. I just wanted to make that, that full introduction. We're trying to get an approval for a shed. This would be a 12 by 10 shed that it would be installed within the property. Unfortunately, the shed was delivered earlier than expected, so it is right now there. So by the time that I set the request in, it wasn't in, so, but I just want to set the record straight that it's there. The shed would be used to put my garden tools. We have one acre and there's a lot of grass, so I need to cut it down and keep it, and keep it beautiful. So we're just looking approval for that.
There's not enough space also in the garage to put a riding lawn mower with the two cars in there.
So there's a lot of interest in your shed, in your neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
Have you talked to any of your neighbors about it?
Yes, I talked to, some of the neighbors approached me on this because there were some, some initiatives running regarding signatures about something related to the shed. My neighbor next to it, the one that's closer to the shed, which is, I don't know, like 80 or 90 feet away from it, he said that he's okay with it. I had, I had the agreement with him and he's, I talked to him over the phone and he's okay with it. So, yeah.
So how do you feel about screening or different location or moving it behind your house, any of those things?
It is behind the house. The, the lot, it is like a wider lot, so if you can, if you can see it, the, the location or the reason that it's in there, it's because behind it, there's a heavy wooded area, so the idea would be that whenever we get snow, I can start riding from it and clear the snow. That's why it's by the driveway. I could screen it if that's a requirement, if that's what the, what the city wants, I could, I could do that, but yeah, that would be, that would be the location that I'm asking for.
I'm sorry, I cut off your question, go ahead.
It's okay. When was it delivered?
I can give you the specific date if you want.
Just approximately.
Yeah, I would like that.
Vault Park.
Mid-May?
Uh, it was delivered on the 7th of May. I'll give you the hour.
No, no, that's okay.
Just, I understand there's a gap between when you fill out the, all the forms that come to ZBA and when it happens, so I can understand. So we did fall within that gap. That's what I was trying to establish, that's all.
Right, right. I, I actually, before even doing anything, I called the city. I called the city to ask if I could have a shed. The answer was yes. I was asking if there was any specific requirements that I need for putting the shed because I know that in Royal Oak, Ferndale, they require like a concrete slab for it because rats, but not here with us. So I asked and then I applied for the permit, but the, well, I applied for the process of the permit and then it was delivered way earlier than expected, which, I mean, you guys are on building things, we know that always takes forever, in this case was backwards, sadly backwards.
Any other questions from the board?
Not at this time.
So I'm going to open this to the public. I, I imagine there's some people here that like to speak on this.
All right.
So how many people, via a show of hands, want to speak on this item? Okay, so my request is, I understand, you know, there's a lot of feedback that you want to give us, just make sure that it's different. So you can say, I agree with what's been said and I'd like to add the following new things. So you can agree with what's been said and then add new things. That will help us.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Minehart. My board is here with me, pardon my board.
So your address is?
7171 Patteries Drive.
Okay.
The main concern from the neighbors and our board was the fact that it was setting a precedent to be able to go ahead and, go ahead and do whatever it is you want to do and then in this case erect a shed before permit or approval was given. So that was, we didn't want to set that precedent, it's in the neighborhood to have that happen. I don't know if you saw, but the other thing is that we were just wondering because we know that the ordinance, the township ordinance is, that it should be erected in a rear yard. In our minds, it's kind of like that would be behind the house and whereas this kind of sits off to the side, so it almost looks more like it's at the rear of a side yard rather than behind the house. So we weren't sure what the, the guidelines are there, what it is when the ordinance says a rear yard. My house personally also sits off to the side, so it kind of, you know, our main yard to the side there, if I was to set something just in the rear of it, is that, and it's totally visible, is that still considered rear yard or would that be the back of the side yard? If, if it is considered, you consider it a side yard, if the shed could be moved to the rear yard, to the back of the house where it's not visible.
Yeah, so when you're, do we have a pointer? Do you, do you have like, could you show us, is the, is the board kind of got an acceptable spot? Do we have a pointer we can give her?
Just, we're saying like just behind the house where it, it wouldn't be visible from the street right now. It's, anyone can see it from wherever, from whatever angle and driving past, it's seen and so, I don't know.
So you're saying, if I'm looking from Holiday Drive, you'd.
Yeah, we're, we're saying like behind, behind the actual footprint of the house.
Yeah. So from Holiday Drive, you drew, draw a line to the center of the house and that's where you'd put it.
Yeah, at least there or, yeah, because how, how his, I'm, I'm not even sure how the back of his house is situated, if, you know, if he has something that jugs out or anything like that. I've never been in the backyard.
Okay.
But that, that was like our main concerns and I, I won't elaborate more because I know that others have things to say.
So is there an architectural control committee or, you know, when you say the board, what are you referring to?
To the president, the co-president, the vice president, and the treasurer.
Okay. And is there, is there a position of the board then? What's the board's position? Or is it just individual opinions or?
No, I mean, the position would be ideally to, if, if you grant that, you know, he can still have it, is to have it moved behind the footprint of the house. If that's not possible, then at least to have it screened as you require. So, but I, I don't want to elaborate on that.
Okay, yeah, no, I understand.
I know that other people want to say that.
Got it, okay.
Full disclosure though, I did actually have a heartfelt conversation with the homeowners today. I wish that that conversation had taken place earlier because they did tell me that they had applied for a permit and that they were not expecting the shed to come until like the following month at least. However, I mean, you know, it still is saying that they were, they were doing it before they got the approval of the board. And also a cement slab had already been laid, so, I mean, but, you know, they were expecting to receive that. So I just do want to say that, that, you know, I don't know how much of a factor that plays into it, but that, that's what I, I was told by them, so.
Yeah, so, so we need as many of the facts we can so that we balance all the different things and those facts are helpful, so.
Right.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Stephen Ross, I live at 4329 Chamberlain Drive. I've been a board member and I am currently co-president of the HOA. And I must say before I begin that I am completely impressed with the board's efficiency and fairness and I just wish that Washington DC was running like you are here.
Whoa, I don't know, what, what are we getting here?
I know, compliment.
This is, wow, this is amazing. We had a 92-year-old and we have these comments and we hit Terry, it's, what a night.
What we are concerned with, in a way, it's a little repetitious, but we don't want to set a precedent. This, this 12-foot-high, a cement foundation was poured at the side of the house. It's not in the rear. And the 12-foot shed was delivered and put on the cement foundation. It's visible from the street. One of our main responsibilities as board members is to ensure the aesthetic responsibility of the area of our subdivision. We do not want, if he's allowed to keep the shed visible from the street, then we're going to have more sheds and that's what we don't want because it'll decrease home values and in some ways dissuade somebody who's planning on buying a house in our subdivision or buying a house and tearing it down, rebuilding a home. And that's basically where we're at. It's, the board's unanimous decision is not to have it placed where it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mark Iyer, 4425 Kism Trail, I'm the vice president of Homeowners Association. Yeah, not to re-go again with what he said, but.
So you agree with what he said and you're adding the following new comments?
Adding the following new comments, which comes down to the screening, which is non-existent and the fact that the slab, cement slab at the end of the driveway, there's no way to plant anything between that and the driveway. So it should be in the back, behind the footprint of the house and it should be screened. And the permit should have been gotten before the slab was put down and the whole issue could have been, not even brought up. So we're just, as we've been saying, we're just trying to go along with what the ordinances are, so that's all we want.
Thank you.
Good evening, Herman Eichner, 7221 Holiday Drive. Agree with what's been stated to, to date. Um, I would like you to go back to the picture, um, looking from Holiday Drive to the shed.
Side view, side view.
The straight-on view. Yes. The picture in the top left, there's quite a matter of perspective. The home is not set back anywhere near that far. And the shed is to the left side of the picture. You can barely see the see the driveway.
Yeah, if you move more to the left, you'd see a lot more of the shed.
You absolutely see it, and it's 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 in full view.
Yep, because it's the end of the driveway.
It is, and I don't see a practical way to screen it, given its positioning. So, to use the the word of the night, Chris, I would implore the the board to require either removal of the shed, or move it to behind the house, not just behind that uh that line of the house, but behind where it's totally obstructed from from view of the road.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Sean Halaka. I live at forty-four eighty-one Chisholm Trail, which is up top the hill behind them. I just want to say that I agree with all of the concerns that have already been expressed. I don't want to see a plethora of sheds in our subdivision.
Thank you.
Thank you for your succinct comments. Anyone else that'd like to speak on this item? Thank you for, you really did a good job of 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 not repeating the same things. Thank you. Not a lot of groups do that. So I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back.
I have a question. I do want to add, when you look at his-
So you gotta go to the podium? You gotta? So your name and?
Hi, I'm Bobby Amy at four four one five Chisholm Trail.
Okay.
Um, when you do look at his house, it's a beautiful house. Now go back to the shed, please. That's what it looks like. It has nothing to do with the house. It just sticks out like a sore thumb. And when you drive by, you look up his driveway, and that's what you see. I agree with what everyone else has said, but it needs to be behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so now I will close the public hearing. Once again, compliment you, and ask the homeowner to respond to any of the comments. So so you have a lot of feedback about moving it behind your house and screening it. What do you think about that feedback?
There there are some issues with moving it. Um, the reason we cannot be um, the location that they're thinking of, right behind the house, it's because of, it's a really, really heavy slope with heavy, I mean, it's heavy wood.
We would have to cut down trees.
We would have to cut down trees to do that. Um, and the picture was taken by the request of the person of the township who asked me to take it from the front door. So I took it from the front door, right? So that that's, I I understand that the picture might not be great, but uh, but this is, this is the 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 best location in order to fulfill the the purpose. Now, I have to say out loud that there is not a concrete slab. If there was one, it would be great, but it's worth a lot more, a lot more. We don't, we do not have a concrete slab. I don't know where that's coming from. I can show you pictures. This has gravel. It's a gravel pad that it was built, and that was built in in a, I mean, within a day. So that was pretty quick. I I I do not have the skills to do that, so I hired somebody that came over and built it ru- right away. So that that was, that's the thing. I just want to say that the record very clear that there's no concrete slab there. I can invite my neighbors if they want to come over and take a look, but that's the way it is. I have pictures as well.
And then, if there is space in the front between like where the shed is and where the driveway starts, I don't know how, like, five, six feet between the shed and the-
Correct. It is not all the way to the driveway. There is a good, a good, if if not even more. There's grass. It could be, if if it's requested, I can set up some really big trees there to try to cover it, but it there is grass. I mean, I just want to bring some perspective as well, that whenever they're driving by Holiday Drive, they're like a hundred, over a hundred feet away from from the location, so it's it's really hard to see. Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I got a picture, just give me a second.
Yes, thank you.
I don't know how to set this thing up.
It won't be the first time tonight.
Be an expert at the end of the night. Is that is that gravel?
It's gravel, yes.
Amongst two-by-fours or something? Yeah.
But it's, mm, there's six-by-fours.
Yeah.
So that's wood that we're seeing.
But it's also leveled. You've leveled it there, too.
It is leveled, yes.
Yeah, so it's not a slab, but yeah, obviously you did work to, you know, you know, set-
Yeah, because I don't I don't want it falling out, or or, I mean, yeah, yeah. But it's not a concrete slab, which is what they mentioned.
If you screen between the driveway and the shed, could you open the doors?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, are we able to ask questions, or is he just the responder?
You can ask some questions, sure. Again, I run a very flexible meeting, so-
I just wanted to find out where we are. Scott, you were in the middle of something. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I got my, I got it answered.
All right.
What's the practical practical difficulty of not putting it in your backyard?
Can you go, I'm sorry.
No, yeah.
There's a couple pictures that-
Confused on something. This is not a variance for the location of the shed. It's complying with, the location complies with the ordinance.
Yes.
It's just a permission request. The variance is for the size going over the fifty percent.
I don't think that applies to us here. What, this can't possibly be fifty percent.
It isn't.
I think that's a typo in our notes.
It's, no, it goes a hundred and sixty one-
No, because it count in the garage.
Goes a hundred and sixty-one square feet over, so that's the variance. It's just, the shed, though, meets the the setbacks.
Okay.
But it's not screened.
But it's not screened.
Yeah, it's the problem.
But it's, the location is not-
Well, but there's objections from the neighbors, and they can't screen it.
If we could see the pictures, I can show you that based on the location, it's heavy wood at that, I mean, back there. So, oh, I thought you you would be able to see it. But there's a bunch of trees.
You're saying like, there's plenty of area to screen, unlike an earlier one.
Well, what I'm saying is, we don't usually, I mean, if it meets, right, I mean, it's not like, they need, they're asking for a variance for the placement.
He's not on the, he's not on the-
He's varies a-
Right, that's the problem.
It is the rear yard. It's not the side yard under our ordinance definition, so that's appropriate. But and then the variance is he's going a little bit a hundred square feet over.
Okay, I get what you're saying.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What is the the specific distance from the end of your driveway to the the front edge of the shed? How mu- how many feet do you have?
I think that's around, that was the other picture that was shown, but I-
Be no problem then in putting arborvitae blocking the shed right along the side, and so basically, if people look down your driveway, they'll just see arborvitae.
Above the trees. If you if you see on the on the right side, on where the, those are the trascans that I use for for picking up the clippings. So that area, that's that I'm taking twelve feet at least from the driveway where the driver ends, and where the shed, the the-
Starts, the doors are-
So it would be possible to put in arborvitae or some type of evergreen
Yes.
that meets the height of the shed, and it's on any sides that would block the view of that shed from the surrounding neighbors. So maybe you have to put it on not only the front, but maybe a side, or the other. They can't see it from the street. They can't see it from their homes. Is that possible?
It could be done, yes. I do have to say that there is another shed in the in the subdivision.
Yeah, so we're we're not discussing other lots, we're discussing this.
I just wanted to bring us an example, because I think it's worth it.
Yeah, that doesn't help you.
Okay.
But if you screen it, and you you had mentioned that you want to use to store your lawn equipment and everything, and so if it's screened, it's still gonna allow you reasonable use of it to be able to pull out of it, and?
Yes, yes, it would, it would still be done.
We would have to leave like a like a space for the lawnmower to go through it.
Right, but maybe we can-
The doors swing, too.
Yeah, the doors open up, swing out.
I'm just saying like to actually get the lawnmower out of the screening forces.
Well, I think you turn it. How do you?
Okay, can you, I'm sorry, can you go back to the to the other image, the the drawings?
Think it's interesting, because the backyard there, his, that back corner of the yard where the shed is, there's the house at seventy-one hundred that sees it, but then behind it, there's nothing.
Right, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's heavy, heavy wood. I mean-
Yeah, when down here, the next lot, it's, it's-
So, but you have to get it screened from the street, so that's what I'm saying.
Can I rotate the doors facing a different direction?
There is a big, big tree-
It looks like it's too close to the driveway.
A big, big maple that that would block me to from doing that.
So if you put the the, go ahead.
Are you sure? Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, so if you put the the evergreens, whatever they are, as soon as you get to the driveway, just put the evergreens there. That gives you more than enough space between those uh evergreens and the garage for you to come around, open the door.
Yes, I can do that. Yes, I could do that.
Well, I, oh, I'm sorry.
Mind if I jump in here, Carol?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, a couple things. I did drive by your site today. Uh, walked around it, took a look at the area. It is very visible from the street, so I didn't have to look at my phone to find your address, and I was able to find it. Um, which, again, the spirit of some of the things we're trying to do is, it's not just about, can we allow the shed? Is is the shed in the right place aesthetically? A lot of the things we've talked about, where we talk about colors or placement, is to not only follow the ordinance, it's the spirit of the ordinance, so it doesn't burden or impact our neighbors. So the neighbors have been very nice in coming here and saying, it's not that we, most of them don't want to have a shed, but the board allows sheds in certain cases. So maybe moving that shed to appease the neighbors and be a good neighbor might be a good thing. I did have a look at your lot and where your area are. We're talking about a hundred and twenty square feet. Ten by twelve is where you have to fit in. You do have a trade lot, but it's not that trade, and you do have some elevation changes, but you've already shown me that you can grade and create an area that would be able to fill. So like, in the spirit of what we're trying to do here, you can accommodate all those things. So, the other part that I have a little bit of a challenge with is, you made improvements on your property prior to getting the approval. The shed being delivered, that's outside of your control, but you put a pad in prior to getting approval from us.
Right.
So we if we would've said no, you would've done that pad without anything. So I I find that you were expecting us to say yes without having all the facts.
The the pad was done within a day. I hired some, I I don't have the skill set to do that. I ha- hired somebody to do that, and I was, since the shed company let me know that they were delivering, so I I hired somebody to do it right away.
No, and and I, but the board-
You need our approval.
You need our approval to do it. So you can put a pad on your property. You were doing it to improve your property, thinking that we're gonna say yes. If we happened to say no, then you would have had this pad. So that is a, that is a thing I'm struggling with a little bit. So, um, the only way I'm willing to support this is if it's moved, in my my-
About that, my question is, what are the setbacks to that shed, from that shed to the property lines? Because you're not right at sixteen sixteen, correct? So you could move that pad. You can move that pad, move it back more so that it can be screened better, not necessarily moving it behind your house, but I think you've got room to just shift it where it is backwards more and screen it. What's the, what's the feet from, I need to know, what's the distance from that shed to your property lines on both sides?
You mean, from here?
Here to here, it doesn't say.
I think you have it written down. It's just hard for us to read.
This says twenty, but this doesn't say anything.
Um, I I think what I was trying to say with that, that that, the the distance to to the right side, that's like ninety feet, if not even more, I, if if I'm if I'm not mistaken. Um, and then from the back, it's it's a little bit, I think it was like sixty feet, something like that.
Sixty, six, okay, so you got plenty of room to move it back.
Yeah, so you can shift it.
Yeah, well, if you move it back and put in good screening, and you have plenty of room to open the doors.
And put the gravel back down.
And you get the dr-
Right, but I mean, i- in during the winter, so that that's where it would get really complicated to drive it down to clean the road.
It's gonna be more complicated if you don't have a shed.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
So.
So, our goal here is to work with you and work with the neighbors.
Right.
That is the goal, right?
Right.
And there are a couple mistakes that happened based on outside of your control with the delivery, and then some that are in our control about talking to our neighbors and getting some of the approvals prior to making this improvement on your property. So our goal as a board is to help you get what you want, but mitigate all the issues that might have been caused. So can you help us so that we can get you there?
Yes, 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 and I think, as we mentioned before, I will be willing to put, there's plenty of space if if I put um, really high trees to cover it from the street, and which I think would solve the issue from from seeing it.
You're saying in the present location, you feel like they're gonna-
In the in the current location.
They're gonna put arborvitae to the height of the shed.
Yes, I'll do that.
Immediately.
I'll do it right away.
So that you're not gonna be able to see it
I have a question.
From the street.
What, I mean, we've asked this many times, and it still seems to be a little unclear, but what the distance is between the driveway and the shed? Five feet, twelve feet? I've heard multiple answers.
I think around like ten, twelve feet. So we, so I do can open the doors.
It's kind of part of the problem. We don't really have good dimensions.
Yes. We don't.
So, we can table it, or you can agree to move it? Yeah, that's kind of what, that's that's, those are the things. Chairman, I don't want to speak out of turn here, but from my vote, I would love to give this to you. I would like it either moved, or we'll table it until you can get me a site plan that shows me. I believe you're right on the ninety feet, because you have a very big lot.
Right.
It's still like in the middle of your lot. So then I just put a bunch of arboritae's around this island. It aesthetically is still gonna have an impact, and we're trying to minimize this.
Right, 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 but but I I don't understand what you're looking for, the distance in between the driveway and the door of the shed?
I think we're looking for accurate measurements all around it.
Okay.
Including the measurements from the side and the back to your property lines.
Okay.
And the and the distance between the driveway and the front of the shed.
And your and your screening plan.
Yeah, we need, we don't, so you're gonna need screening, otherwise you're not gonna approve it. You're not gonna be able to see it from the street, otherwise you're not gonna approve it, and then we need to know those dimensions. So that we feel that the screening plan makes sense, and that there's no other spot on the lot that makes sense. Can you do that for us?
I'll do it. I'll get you all of those um measurements.
Okay.
And also, so there's no misunderstanding. It's not just screening it from the street, okay? If it's visible to somebody else somewhere, you've got to screen that, too.
Even if I have agreement from the neighbor, who would be able to see?
That doesn't make any difference. He can move.
It doesn't sound like you have an agreement from any of your neighbors.
Yeah, he could, your neighbor could move, and the next neighbor, we gotta, we gotta enforce the order.
What I meant was that the closest to the shed, I do have agreement with him.
Right, but he could move. He could sell, he could hit the lottery, and, you know.
As you heard, there's some that disagree.
Yeah.
Right.
So, when we're closed here, I'll make a motion. Are we ready?
I think we're ready.
I'll make a motion to table.
When would we be back?
When would they be?
So our next meeting is July eighth. If you can give me materials, correct measurements, um, a landscaping plan within a week, we can get you on the next agenda. Otherwise, it's August twelfth.
All right. I'll send it as soon as possible. Can I get your email?
Just put it right down here.
We need to vote, you guys.
We need to vote, so, support. So so we had a motion to table and support, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And you have your instructions on what you need to get? So are you you, uh, the neighbors clear on what we're asking for? Okay. So will we see you at the next meeting? Okay, good.
Bring snacks.
Yeah. So you don't have to repeat everything again at the next meeting.
Maybe we can flip the the order.
Yeah.
Well, the group says you will be at the beginning of the agenda, because it's a table item.
Yeah, we'll put you at the beginning. Yeah, you guys are really patient, so thank you.
Oh, no worries. It's fine.
Yeah. You would, somebody was gonna say something?
No.
It's, it was nice to meet you.
Same, okay.
Thank you. So call you next item. Item fifteen, forty-five, I leave.
Good evening. How you doing?
Good evening.
Oh, hi.
Great, great.
Yeah.
Um, I'm here, uh, I I would like to put a shed in my property.
Are you sure?
And I'm glad I live in that neighborhood.
It's gonna be screened.
Um, yeah, yeah, I understand. Um, so, it's kind of screened already. Um, it sits in a, uh, in the lower elevation of the property. There's a big burn, or should I say, uh, hill. The the other side of the hill is Square Lake, so, um, it's 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 very tall. There's also a lot of woods there. It's, you'd be hard-pressed to see it unless you were looking for it.
Any comments from the board about the screening for the shed, or the?
It's not an existing shed, is it?
No, no.
Oh, okay. He kept saying it's new, okay.
Alright, so this is the public. Any you two guys want to comment? Oh, you thumbs up? Wow, okay.
I don't know, but-
No, well, they're they're the next agenda item, maybe. No, they're, they're the next to shed item, they just want to push us through fast.
Okay, okay, I got you.
So, a closed public hearing.
So, the only comments that I'll have associated with this are that you have to have the screening. So I know you have some, but you'll be able to see down on it because it is in the valley. It actually will require you to have higher screening.
Okay.
So, because, again, normally height, just, you don't actually see it, we will need that now.
Okay.
Again, so, we cannot see it from the road, from public view.
Right, fair enough.
And you're good with that.
Okay.
So, unless any other discussion from my fellow Board members here.
Nope, fire away.
All right, I'll fire away.
Let her rip.
Sorry, let me get to.
Oh, sorry, I didn't tell you my name and my address. Please give us that. Skinner, is here, four-eight-five, Eileen.
Thank you. So, for the permission request, in regards to the appeal at four-eight-five Elaine Drive, for the accessory structure, I move the request to approve, as submitted based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate the compliance with section forty-two dash seven-six standards because size of accessory structure is compatible with the adjoining properties based on the fact that it meets our standards for how much size it is. Use the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood based on, it is a shed, it is for, um, utility tools for the area. Location of accessory structure will not hinder or discourage adjacent use of properties. Obviously, we're going to have, um, screenage, which you have noted here, and I only need to do one there, so that's good. We're going to go to the dimensional variance now, in regards to the appeal at four-eight-five Elaine Drive, uh, for the, um, setback and exceeding one-half of the ground area. The practical difficulty is that the compliance restrictions, the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the fact that they don't have as much, um, uh, side yard or back setback in this area, specifically because he doesn't have much of a backyard. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, as none of them were complaining about it. New circumstances of the property have been demonstrated because of the fact that you don't have much backyard. You have two setbacks associated with Elaine and West Square Lake. This is not, not self-created because you didn't create the house. So, with that, um, if the motion is approved, applicant for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to commencing its installation. A single-family affidavit is required to be submitted to the township, and you must screen it on all areas from the public view.
Understood.
Support.
So I have motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Call you item sixteen, two-oh-seven-one, Birchland.
You made it.
Having a good time.
Brief, brief.
Um, my name's Andrew Miller, um, three-three-zero-zero, Alvin Road, I'm with Design House Architecture. Um, this is, I'm representing Michael Pizzamonte, my client. So, we went to the Board, or the Building Department with this as an attached structure. It's four feet off of the house with louvers, and the only changes are their, so their bedrooms right there, along with their bathroom for their master suite. We just actually did that addition, and they want to put this pergola covered patio on the existing concrete slab. And the windows, yeah, you can see them right there. So, if we would have connected the existing roof slope onto the covered patio, it'd be a very dark space and they would get no light in there, so we came up with the idea to put these louvers that connect with a ledger board onto the house, so you get the sunlight in there. But they don't, he, well, I don't know, Chris is his name, I guess, but he said that the two types of root structures, if there was a pergola, they would have accepted it, but because we have the shingles on the one side